Okay, last room is up. Ken.
If we don't mind, let's just wait about one minute. Councilman Kerry is almost here.
Cool.
I mean, do you have trouble with the joke?
You don't want that. I have a funny filter. It's really, really funny in my head, but by the time it gets filtered out, it gets filtered out, and it's terrible.
Yeah, it's flimsy. That could never work.
There's only 10 types of people who understand binary. Those who do and those who don't.
Yeah, that's a Microsoft joke. How, is he a minute away or five minutes?
He said he was a minute.
You know an ID 10T areas?
Most of mine, yes.
Okay, here's the joke.
All right, what is it?
At one point during the game, the coach called his nine-year-old baseball players aside and asked, "Do you understand what cooperation is, what a team is?" "Yes, Coach," replied the little boy. So the coach called one of his nine-year-old baseball players. "Do you know, understand what cooperation, what a team is?" "Yes, Coach," replied the little boy. "Do you understand that what matters is whether we win or lose together as a team?" The little boy said, "Yes." So, the coach continued, "I'm sure you don't, don't know when an out is called. You shouldn't argue. Curse the umpire calling him asshole. Do you understand that?" Again, the little boy nodded. The coach continued, "And when I take you out of the games for another boy gets a chance, it's not a dumbass decision." And the coach is a shithead, is that yet? I know on the radio.
Yeah, I know.
"Nope, Coach." "Good," said the coach. "Now go over there and explain that to your grandmother."
Oh, boy.
Kid?
Pretty accurate.
Do what?
Pretty accurate.
Pretty accurate.
We had eight members in the audience that liked it.
Good. Did anybody give me a thumbs up?
I met with LCA earlier today, and there were two coaches there. One was a former coach and one was a current coach, and we were talking about coaching little kids. And one quit because of the parents. The other one was talking about quitting because of the parents.
Sorry for the delay.
No problem, no worries. All right, we're going to call the meeting to order just a little bit late. Thank you for your patience at 5:05. Let's start with roll call.
Shana Martinez, District 1.
Paul Kerry, District 2.
Philip King, District 3.
Todd Schierhardt, District 4.
Herb Dyer, District 5.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. Everybody's accounted for. Please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing before the invocation. Lester Portwood.
Let us pray. Lord, we give thanks together as city council and people in the community. Lord, we give thanks for our wonderful community. We're particularly thankful in between the seasons of Thanksgiving and Christmas and being in Advent, a time where we prepare ourselves to show the love of Christ to the world. Lord, would you bless our community? Or would you help us to have goodwill and kindness and goodness to everyone in our midst? Lord, would our, our town be an example to others that people would be cared for and made to feel like family in the season where that's highlighted so much? Lord, for all of the things that are discussed, the things that are, generate more buzz or less buzz, whether they seem big or small, they're all for the goodness of this community. So, Lord, would you bless all of the conversation and decisions that happened tonight? May good things come to our town through it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that.
Thank you, God.
All right, next item, citizens' comments. Do we have anybody that would like to speak for citizens' comments? Please.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Reeve. I live at 2209 Geneva Street, and I have a complaint about roosters, chickens, and calves. My neighbor behind me had roosters for a long time until I complained about it, and they finally got rid of them. Well, they have now since moved away, and another person has moved into the house, but they forgot to clean up the chicken mess in the chicken coop, and it has a very foul odor. I don't know who are going to get to clean it up, but that's something that should be addressed somewhere along the line. But the best thing is, the roosters, 2211 thought he needed chickens or thinks he needs chickens to have fresh eggs every day, and they have two roosters, and they go cockadoodledoo at 4:30 in the morning. That's my sleep time. I don't know about everybody else, but I find that very, very disturbing. Now, they only do, they do it then, but they're doing it off and on during the day, and that's no call for that. I talked to him, he blew me off. Animal Control went up there, they talked to him, he blew them off. And I talked to Chief of Police, and he said, "We're working on it." I'm hoping we can resolve this very shortly because there should be no reason to have a rooster in your henhouse. All they do is cockadoodaloo. They don't need them to make eggs. My second complaint is going to be on the cat situation in town. We've got cats running all over Geneva Street, and some of them don't care where they have, do their little thing, number two. I got neighbors that turn their cats out in the morning and collect them back in at night. I've got a neighbor that leaves his garage door open that high because it'd leave the cat wandering. I brought this document on animal control to both of them, and neither one paid attention. The one with the, his dole, I forget his last name, he lives down the street from me. They leave their garage door open, the cats roaming all the time. There's no control there, no collar, no nothing. And in the ordnance, it's supposed to be, your pets are supposed to be on a collar, on a leash, and walking with you, and they're not. They're just roaming. They go to people's houses. They climb up on the vehicle, scratching paint. They go poop in the yard. They come over to my yard, they'll do it there. It's getting to be to the point where it's ridiculous. It's no call for that. I call it trespassing and defacing property. I don't know what everybody else would call it, but it's getting old and it needs to be taken care of. And I hope you, as a city council, will do something about it. That's all I have from my, thank you.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else? All right, next item is consent agenda. The two items on the consent agenda are minutes for November 9th, 2021 special called council meeting, and minutes for November 9th, 2021 regular called council meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Great, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, Scott, can I get the presentation thing?
I don't know that I trust myself well enough. You can probably catch it.
I don't know if I could catch it, but I could try.
All you can do is you try. All you can do is try.
Probably the line.
That's not all you could do.
Yeah, Yoda would disagree with that.
I got some really nice bifocals from Dr. Burgess. I lost them, but I got the cheap readers.
Doing exactly the same thing. First expensive pair I did was.
How did you lose them once you had? They went around your neck.
Couldn't see them.
No, no, I had, like, the ones he put on, and somehow I took them off, and I couldn't lose the cheap ones.
Oh.
But the minutes reflect the discussion.
Has digressed already.
Carter, Mayor's report.
All right, so this is. We'll dock his time. Do we need to set a timer? No, I mean, no, seriously, do you want to start at 12?
Okay, yeah, at 5:12, we're going to have the Mayor's Report, and let me start this one. All right, Mayor's Report, December 14th, 2021. Today, we're going to talk about the holiday season in Castroville, a little bit of a recap, a little bit of stuff coming up. We're going to discuss briefly the River Bluff Power Project, what our status is with that. A little bit of discussion on creating general fund revenue. Just as a reminder, the general fund funds primarily streets, parks, police, library. That's most of the services, nonutility services come out of the general fund. And then, just a quick talk about utility winterization preparation as we come up to that season. All right, so holiday season in Castroville. We had the Old Fashioned Christmas, tremendous turnout. We had almost the maximum number of vendors. It was a banner year for that. They were all very thrilled with it. We had lots of visitors. It was a little bit busy here, and people had just a great time. They were very, very happy with that. We've got the Symphony Shop coming up this Saturday. If you want to find details about this, I apologize, I should have put this up, but if you go to the Chamber's website at casterville.com/calender, they've got the calendar of events. They've got most of the stuff that's coming up there. We have the Santa at American Legion Hall next Monday. I didn't put it on here. Actually, we have Movies in the Park. So, we did Movies in the Park last Friday. We had a great turnout. We showed Elf. We had about 100 people there.
Which is ama, that's amazing.
It's amazing.
I think they used to do this, so it's not like it's the first time she's ever done.
First time in a long time.
Yeah, to do it the first time in a long time, and have 100 people is pretty impressive.
With very little advertising, a lot of word of mouth, and just everybody was thrilled with it. The snow machine was interesting, but the kids had a blast with it, so that was really fun. We've got another one coming up this Friday. It's Polar Express. Starts right about 6:30 as it starts getting dark, and it'll be a great time. We have the lighting contest. If you haven't seen, on the city's website, there is a lighting contest. There's a prize for residences. There's a prize for businesses. Love to get you involved. There's a nice little award in there. The award from each one gets their power bill paid for December.
Well, up to.
Up to. Up to.
They're probably credited up to $500, so if they have a $200 bill, it'll be paid.
So, for those of you who haven't seen September Square, there's, there's a sleigh in there. Actually, the school put that together. Devin has done a great job of working with Brenda Haby, with the, with the Chamber, with different volunteers that have helped out with this. Priscilla's always involved with, with helping out with these things. So, we had a lot of people that were putting this together. The, the school built the sleigh for us. It's great for pictures. We should probably get that lit up so that people could see it at night, but the rest of it is really well lit. I think they did a really nice job up in September Square. So, check that out if you have not. And the partnership with the Chamber, you know, the Chamber normally puts up the, the wreath on the, the bridge. We've got a little bit more going on on the bridge this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll continue to expand that and just really beautify the town for Christmas. Matt Haby actually got these from a drone. It was kind of funny because I was thinking at, during Old Fashioned Christmas, I'm like, I really wish that I had a drone that could really capture what's going on here. And he got some really interesting pictures of September Square, or excuse me, of Houston Square during the Friday night event, just to, to show you kind of how it's lit up and how many people were there enjoying it. It was, it was a really grand time. I don't think that that was at its busiest either. All right, River Bluff Power Fixes, still my favorite graphic. So, these items are the ones that we had talked about during the town hall that we had back in July, I think it was. So, the first one was getting feedback during the town hall. That we finished. We are finalizing validation of the, of the final design that has gone out to bid already, yes? That is out to.
Uh, no.
Oh.
It's going to bid soon.
It's going to bid soon.
It'll be published, I think, next week, and it'll be available for download.
So, as soon as we get those, we, we need to validate the costs are what the engineer has, has estimated, so really, we've got to continue to work through that. We're finalizing the phased approach, how we're going to, like, what does the timeline look like to implement the solution, and then finalizing the funding strategy. Once we've got this all put together, we're going to have, we're going to present the options. We're going to present where we, where we've come to with that during the town hall, and then immediately following that, we'll bring it to council for.
Super exciting news. We were talking about lead times with our engineering consultant, and one of the things I proposed was the city ordering the materials. So, we've started that process to look at what that looks like, but just the initial response from a few of our vendors on some of the transfers that will be needed, it's 50 weeks.
Wow, a full year.
So.
So, that'll be a part of the discussion, and that's part of, as we're going through the validation, the phased approach, the timing on that, it's going to take, it's taken a lot to put this together. And honestly, this has been, it's a, it's a pretty monumental effort, and we're trying to react to what people have been talking about so that, so that we can meet as many needs as possible. We have taken a lot of time and effort to put this together the right way, so it is no small undertaking, and we're taking it very seriously. So, January, hopefully, we'll have all of that ready for the town hall option, or the, the presentation of the options, and move through from there. Increases, so this next item is really talking about increasing general fund revenues. We have a lot of opportunities to, to go after items here. So, one of the things that we've been doing is talking with the Chamber about what can we do in cooperation with the Chamber? How do we partner up to support our businesses, to support tourism, to support special events? What do we do to partner up and, and basically help our existing businesses generate money? And what are the opportunities that we can do as a city to generate additional funds? Really, this is looking, we are in super solid financial situation right now, but the more that we can generate, the more we can actually do. I'm firmly committed, and I think that all of council is firmly committed, to improving the city, actually getting out there and doing the fixes on the streets, doing beautification efforts. There's a lot of efforts that are going on with that and increasing programming so that we've got a, really, just even a better place to live. Tourism board, we talked about that. I came back through some of the slides that we had talked about, about why I feel like a tourism board or a tourist and, what do we call it, a convention and visitor bureau? Something about that that is concentrating specifically on tourism. Part of what I think that, that board needs to do is to focus on hot funds, the hotel occupancy tax, on getting heads in beds. So, it's really making sure that we are spending it to what it is intended to, keeping ourselves within not just the, the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law, and making sure that we're spending those really well, and, and working with the stakeholders, with the hotels and the people that are providing the hotel occupancy tax for us so that it's actually benefiting them and that we can use it for, for increasing that. And then, looking at different types of special events, we have revenue generating events right now. We have some others that we've been working through what some of the possibilities are. Part of this is we don't have the personnel to be able to coordinate these, and so this is another opportunity potentially to partner with the Chamber, to partner with the CADC, the Economic Development Corporation, and try to find different areas, other volunteers, other areas where we can do things like this. I know CADC and ARNI specifically has done a ton on the different, the tour to Castroville, on all kinds of different things that we can continue to have these, these events that bring people in, that derive, I call them soft revenue, just people that come in will enjoy the things that we have in our town, they'll come in and deposit some money and leave. And then, there are other ones that are direct revenue opportunities where we can actually charge for things and provide great services, great programming, that people actually pay for. And then, there are other public-private partnerships. We haven't had any opportunities for this, but I want to make sure that we're looking for these. If there's a way that we can leverage some of our existing assets to help out a business that can help generate revenue, you do this through economic development efforts, and it's not spending money necessarily out of our, out of our coffers, but it's taking the, the assets that we currently have and really applying that and working with, with the private entities to help them generate more money. Again, it all comes to our bottom line to help make our place a better place to be. So, these are slides that I had shown back when we talked about the tourism board. Supporting Castroville businesses truly benefits everybody in Castroville. So, it generates revenue for the general fund, allows us to create better amenities, more fun things to do locally so we don't have to leave, gives us bragging rights. Nobody wants to talk about, "I've got the most reliable utilities." It's not sexy, it's not fun, it's, but saying, you know, "We've got this great Old Fashioned Christmas, we've got this great town, an amazing regional park, a great airport." It gives us an opportunity to brag to our friends and enjoy that with them. So, how businesses help all of Castroville. This is, this is the same chart that I showed from July, so it's a little bit dated, but it's fairly accurate. So, total general fund revenue, from commercial, we get, that's just over $2 million, which is 52% of the overall revenue that's, that's generated, that pays for our police, that pays for our streets, that pays for our parks, that pays for this to be a better place, that pays for the, the staff that we have to support all of these things. 52% of that comes from our businesses. So, what does that look like? Annual revenue from businesses, from property tax, that's 737, almost $738,000. The sales tax is $1.2 million, a little bit over. The hotel motel tax, the $40,000 that we can use to, to promote the city and to encourage tourism. Total is just over $2 million. When you compare that residential versus commercial, so if you look at where we generate revenue as a city, one thing that, that we hear loud and clear, "Don't raise my taxes", you know, "Don't hike up the cost of living," the fact is that the commercial, by supporting the commercial, they do a lot more force in terms of revenue than, than the, the homes do. So, each one of us as residents, we want to keep our costs low. The more we can generate from, from the businesses, the less we have to burden on ourselves as, as homeowners or as, as residents. Total amount that we get for the general fund through our residents is 455, just over $455,000. Out of a total of, well, so, I forget the total. The total is, what? Only 455,000, 455 and a half thousand of that is from residents. 2 million of that is from businesses.
A big part of that is the over 65 freeze that's in place.
The over 65 freeze, for those of you who are not aware, we have, for those over 65 who have filed for it, there is a freeze on property taxes, and if anybody needs more information on that, please do contact the city. So, with the businesses, they don't have an over 65 freeze. They pay 100% of their property tax, and typically, the, the value of a business is going to be substantially more than the value of the homes that are, that are close by it. So, as we have new businesses coming in, and we will have additional businesses coming in, the businesses will follow the rooftops. You know, that we're getting ready to bring on a whole bunch of new rooftops in the next few years, and as those come in, the benefit to the city financially is going to be fairly substantial, even with some of the, the incentives that we've given to that. We will be able to have a lot more revenue to be able to do better things in Castroville, to make it nicer, to make it better, and to increase the, the things that we can offer. There's always a cost to growth. The cost is the recovery of good farmland. The cost is traffic. We're going to leverage that to, to help out and, and offset that, and to improve in other areas. So, that's basically, and I think most people have seen the stuff that we were talking about there already. So, for utility winterization preparation, I didn't get the picture that when it came down like crazy, this is the next day, but this is City Hall with snow on it. How strange is that? This is from February this year. We learned a lot from February this, this past year, from Snowmageddon, the Snowpocalypse, whatever you want to call that. I think that across Texas, a lot of the utility systems learned from this. We definitely are not, we definitely learned a lot from that. So, there are preparations underway. We're, we're definitely not done. We have made some efforts, so the exposed pipes that froze before, the pipes that are outside are wrapped now. So, we have, just like you would cover up your faucets outside, wrap up your pipes outside, this creates a good amount of ride-through, so that was one of the issues that we had before. Those typically are big enough that they don't freeze. Well, in the, in the winter freeze this year, they froze because it got real cold for a really long time. So, we've done that. What we have not done is enclosed them. Enclosing them into buildings is extremely expensive, and as I look at what other utility systems are doing in San Antonio and other surrounding areas, they're not enclosing their systems because the cost is so much and because it causes issues during the summer as well. Where it helps us out during the winter, it actually hurts us during the summer because then they get too hot and, and electronics can break. But we are continuing to look at where we can have the best bang for our buck with that.
For your information, again, subsequent to our conversation this afternoon, just, so hot off the presses, if you will.
Thank you.
I got the bid for our generators, the big connects, and to do a full, what we're having ultimate bid out, it's $2.5 billion.
So. What's our annual budget for?
Well, so, what our bid, I mean, seriously, so, I've asked that that be broken out, and we can look at it more as a phased approach, but, you know, I was anticipating $400,000 to $500,000.
Not the quick connects?
Yeah, so, we'll be, we're going, not back to the drawing board, but we're reviewing that.
I don't mind if it's fair.
Scale and timing of how we do that. The good news is, from a winterization standpoint, again, I had a meeting with LCA today, we're preparing to have discussions about power acquisition with, with all sorts of providers, not just LCA. But the meeting today was with them, and we talked about winterization, and their forecasters have pretty much said that there is very little chance, next to zero chance, that we're going to go through what we went through last year, this year. That means it won't happen again, but that the next, in the next three to five months, no one's predicting that kind of weather again, so.
Still need to prepare.
You might also want to consider looking at alternatives to automatic switching, which obviously, your learning is very expensive.
Well, no, this would be, this would be quick connects. It's not automatic. We're still talking about having to drag a, you know, a hall generator out to that location.
Plug it in.
Plug it in, start it, make it run, right. This is an automatic fall over.
So, the point, and we can't get into too much discussion with this, if you want to put it as an agenda item, we can discuss what we're doing as we get more information, but I just wanted to kind of give an idea of where we are right now. Generators right now are ridiculously times, and they're really expensive. I know that staff is pursuing different potential grants to be able to cover portions or all of that. So, all of those things are underway. To Scott's point, the forecast, and I've heard the same things, the forecasts that we're hearing are that we're not going to have that kind of winter freeze, and we know that that happens not very often. I just, I wanted to make sure that we don't repeat those mistakes. It happened once, and I would hate for it to happen twice in a row. If you think about the 100-year flood, we had that twice in a row. So, just wanting to make sure that we are aware of it and hyper focusing on this to make sure that it doesn't happen again. The recovery last time was incredibly quick. Again, kudos to the staff for doing that. They pulled out miracles. I just don't want them to have to do heroics every single time. I want us to be very prepared, as much as we can afford to do, so we're going to be very methodical about how we approach that. One of the items was communications. During major outages like this, if anybody tried to call in and report an outage, we have gotten busy signals, we have had issues with being able to get people through, even to the answering service, and so that is something that is not an easy problem to solve, but that is something that we're working on. And then, how do we deal with communications? We lost, I think, three times this year. We've lost full communications, the cell tower's gone out, we haven't been able to communicate with each other, we haven't been able to communicate with, communicate as, as residents with emergency services, so to me, that's a huge issue. That is not necessarily something that we can fix, but we are pursuing different options to get folks in here that can help us out with that. But in terms of our internal communications, that's something that we're definitely working on. And then, staffing, being prepared for, before, when we had people that had to stay here, I think that it was. I think that it was an emergency situation that kind of caught people off guard. And again, kudos to our staff. They pulled out all the stops. They were ready to spend their own money on lodging to stay here locally. They were, they went so far above and beyond the call of duty. I just want to make sure that we're prepared for that. So these are all things that we're looking at. Again, we haven't finalized any of this. We don't believe that we're going to be in that emergency situation, but as Councilman Martinez knows, we will address this swiftly and surely as soon as anything like this comes up. But we will continue these efforts. And that concludes my big long ramble. All right. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, so next item. We are going to have a public hearing for a request for a zoning change from RA Residential, Single Family Dwelling District to CH West Commercial District for approximately 0.32 acres located north of the intersection of Petersburg Street and Jackson Street, also known as 1313 Petersburg Street, Castroville, Texas 78009. We're going to open the public hearing at 5:34. Do we have anybody that would like to speak for the public hearing? All right. Do we need to cover anything else before we close the public hearing? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing at 5:34. Next item, discussion and appropriate action on a request for a zoning change from RA Residential, Single Family Dwelling District to CH West Commercial District for approximately 0.32 acres located north of the intersection of Petersburg Street and Jackson Street, also known as 1313 Petersburg Street, Castroville, Texas 78009.
So if you have items in your packet related to this, separate from the packet, you also should have just the one page. I forwarded an email from our city attorney, who is not able to make the meeting tonight, should have a conflict, but in front of you is her emailed response to several questions I had asked her. I was concerned about just the process, you know, how many votes does it take to vote on this? Approval versus denial? What are the, what's the basis for approval versus denial? That kind of stuff. So that's what you have in front of you, are her emailed responses to all of that. Just in short, this was a property that was originally granted an SUP to operate as a professional office focusing on dental care, you know, so the profession of dentistry. It was made to conform with the design restrictions or requirements for the transitional zones. So this area is right off of Highway 90, but bounded by commercial and residential. On the north side is the residential, and they did comply with all of that. The dentistry office has been open for decades, I guess now, for quite a while. Or a decade, at least.
Since the permit was issued in 2005.
Right. So not quite two decades, but they have, are now looking to sell the business. We're hoping to sell it in December if at all possible. And they had requested, because SUPs cannot be granted or cannot be sold or transferred, they follow the owner, not the property, they requested to change the property to commercial. So that's what the P&amp;Z discussed. Again, you have a review of their comments and the presentation that was made and their recommendation. They have recommended to the city council to grant the commercial use application. And so now it's up to you all to decide what to do from there. And I know that there are some opinions, yeah, some opinions have been shared with me that you all need to discuss here.
And during planning and zoning, during P&amp;Z meeting, they did discuss the special use permit, they discussed the buffer.
On a limited basis. And so we have one member who mentioned that, you know, hey, why don't we just extend the SUP? The chair, the acting chair was, or the formal chair was not there, so it was the acting chair said, "Look, you know, that isn't the request. They aren't requesting an extension of the SUP. They've requested a commercial change, so we can't talk about extending the SUP. We need to address this first. Now, if this gets denied, then we can make recommendations possibly to the owner, all sorts of things." So that's about the extent of the conversation. I was not there, but that's how it was relayed to me. So then they had the conversation about granting the commercial use, and the outcome was a vote in favor of doing so. So, and I don't know, Paul, were you there?
Yes.
So he probably can speak to that.
It was a 4-1 vote to recommend approval.
And what kind of insight can you provide on that meeting?
Well, other than, I think Dr. Harrod, who is the intended operator of the dentist office, indicated that it would be hard for that building to be used for anything else. It's been, it was built as a dental office. There's oodles of equipment built in that is really particular to that service. You know, there was, the question was brought up, you know, if we turn it into commercial, the next thing we know, there could be another chicken restaurant there.
Or vape shop.
Or, yeah, or vape shop. But the cost of the building, it would be prohibitive because of all the equipment that is actually built into that structure. So it's not very unlikely that that would ever happen. It will most likely remain a dental office until it falls down. The other interesting fact was that if you look at your, in your packet, at the zoning map that was provided, the one that's green and purple, the vacant lot next to the dental office some years ago was rezoned commercial. So this property is actually surrounded on two sides, across the street and next door, by commercial property, and on the third side across the street by cemetery. So only the back line abuts a commercial property, and it is less than one standard depth away from Highway 90. So those were kind of the primary focal points of the discussion that the Planning and Zoning Board had.
So one of the things that we discussed here, we do have a, we have a buffer zone. Well, let me ask, did, did everybody get a chance to take a look at that in the CZO?
I'm familiar with it. The Planning and Zoning Board did look at that, and because he has a parking area, a green belt, and a six-foot fence, he was in compliance with the buffer zone requirement.
Well, and the other part was the transitional zone, which really impacted the original SUP. And again, the building, the structure was built in compliance with that, but that was the intent of that, is to protect that. And I think, you know, we received an email. The email was really related to, if you grant a commercial zone, you're kind of, you're going against the original intent, which is to preserve that as a transitional zone and to only allow commercial businesses by SUP. That's the, that was the original intent. Now, the CZO, just from a legal standpoint, the way it's written, I think everybody agrees it needs to work. It needs clarification, and there's some challenges there. But that was the intent, and that was the intent of that email. So I don't, I think, you said buffer. I don't know if you meant buffer or if you meant transitional, the neighborhood transitional zone.
And the, for those of you that aren't familiar, is everybody familiar with why we have the transitional zone?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Perfect. So I think that it's a great idea to have that. I think that it's a great idea not to, to be really, really careful about letting business encroach on it. But in terms of this one, I think that, can we discuss how we might move forward with dealing with that, or is that, that would have to be a separate item?
You're the mayor, if you'd like.
I want to make sure that I stay with the...
Yeah, technically, you have, I mean, the issue is, so you've closed the public hearing, you're now in the, talking about whether or not to approve the commercial zone. So technically, you know, technically, you really should just have some discussion around it. Once everybody understands what's there, look for a motion, just like you normally would do, and then see what happens out of that motion.
Gotcha.
And then depending on that motion, there can be other recommendations made, there can be, you know, it's just like P&amp;Z was faced with.
Well, we've got an appropriate action clause. It says discussion and appropriate action.
Exactly.
Whatever the mayor determines is appropriate, we can discuss.
So I think that, looking at it going forward, I think that it makes a lot of sense to make that transitional zone as a permanent zone instead of a, it's just so subjective, and there's a lot of things that are out there that are subjective. I mean, mind you, it takes a lot to put this together. The fact is, we've got a lot of ordinances that, there were a lot of people that spent a lot of time putting them together, and we need to continue to enhance them and to perfect them and to learn from where the holes are and where the issues are with them. So I think that going forward, the best idea is to develop that into like a very specific zone that has very specific requirements and have it as a separate zone. But that's a part of a larger planning effort that I don't think that we can accomplish in the amount of time that it would take to do that. Because this is something that is very purpose-built, if you've looked in a dentist's office and see how much specialty stuff is in there, you really, it isn't cost-effective for somebody else to come in and especially with the price of that, to raise it like they did with the Chevron. I don't see that we're in any danger of that as a stopgap measure, and the fact that they're surrounded on two sides plus the cemetery of commercial. So I don't think that's totally inappropriate. But let's, let's see. Do we have a motion, and then we'll have discussion?
I'd like to have the discussion first.
Okay, absolutely. Does that work? All right, let's start, or, let me start on the other side.
Okay. I'm opposed to the recommendation, and I recommend we do not agree that we should deny the request for these reasons. This is a longstanding business. It's one of three, and that was the reason that this whole transition idea was created, because in 2005, we had some, we had some serious problems in the city, and we wanted to preserve the city's ability to protect the transition zone and the residences that are adjacent to it. So they wrote the ordinance, and I think it's a good ordinance, but it's not perfect. And like most ordinances, we're now faced with two choices. We can either approve it, and we end up then with a commercial zone with no control about what goes in it. And I know of a number of unsightly businesses in many towns I've lived in that are in, in buildings that look exactly like residences, just like this one. And I wouldn't want those businesses to be in my city. And if we approve what they've recommended, we lose control of what gets in that building in spite of everybody's best intentions, and we all believe everything we've been told, I'm sure, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So I recommend that we put on the next agenda, an agenda item to discuss three specific changes to the CZO that would allow this, would fix this problem. If you would like, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say what they are briefly, and I'll stop talking about it, or I can just ask you to put it on the agenda, but you really don't benefit from it if you don't know what we've got to do. I would like to just outline in three sentences.
Sure.
The changes that I believe we would need to make, and we, the city council, could discuss and vote on those changes at the next meeting.
Are we okay with discussing that, or should we?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, I've overstepped a couple of times, so I just want to make sure.
I've read the, I've read the CZO very carefully. I've discussed it with a number of people that are very familiar with it. It's in my, the, two of the three businesses are in my district, so I'm very familiar with what drove the city to do what they did. But here's all we'd have to do to the existing CZO. Number one, we'd have to change the part that says, "The owner cannot sell or transfer his special use permit." So we simply say, "The owner can sell or transfer his or her special use permit." Number two, we could put a requirement in, a simple phrase that says, "Prior approval from the city would be required," which would require the city to investigate and vet the person that was going to buy the business to be satisfied that we knew what the person's intent was. And that's been done already under the current ordinance, even though it doesn't specify. And number three, we would put a simple prohibition that says, "No changes to use." With those three additions, the CZO would be clearer. It would still be in existence, it would still be in full force. The only difference is, everybody could win in this situation. The current business owner can sell his business with that change, and perhaps even make some profit on his investment for the last 16 years because he went through the process of getting the permit. So it's worth something to him.
So you said, "No change to use," but earlier when we spoke, it's more than that, right? It's not just a change, no change to use, but also no change to the conditions that were put in place by the specific use permit.
Right. The conditions in the permit would not change. Nothing would change in the permit, except the name of the owner.
Right.
And then this would allow the person to be a winner. It would allow the city to be confident that we know what's going on in that business now, and we are confident that in the future, under this new owner, nothing will change. And I believe that eliminates the risk to the city that if we did just do away with the permit and make it commercial, we have no idea what's going to happen on that property in the future. So that would be my recommendation.
Can we, if we had this motion, could we have the special use permit extended with the same stipulations as before during this council meeting?
No.
If that's what, okay.
No, so for a number of reasons. Number one, it's going to require a public hearing to change the CZO. Number two, we need to verify that everything that...
If we're not changing the CZO, and we're, but I...
No, but you are, because you're going to amend the CZO to make these changes to your ordinance, to allow for this. So that will require a public hearing. But then the secondary, secondary to that is, we really do need to get a legal opinion on some of those recommendations, because I need to know, you know, for instance, can the city? I believe that the answer is yes. I don't, I don't know of anything that would prevent you from doing what has been proposed, but we just need to verify that. So that would happen between now and the next meeting. But I don't see, from a logistics standpoint, everything that Councilman Dyer has proposed is doable. You know, it's not a...
The only thing I worry about is the timeline. Brianna told me that they were hoping to do the sale in the middle of December, within a week. So, you know, we're, if we, if the city council votes to reject the recommendation, we throw a monkey wrench in there for the current owner. I would like to ask if there's, if we can make a commitment, if we're going to pursue this, if we can do something to at least, at least give them some degree of confidence that we're going to take it up at the earliest possible time and try to reconcile it as fast as possible.
Let me ask you something. This is the second thing that's come to us from, from P&amp;Z that, that there has been basically opposition to P&amp;Z's, their thoughts on it. So if P&amp;Z approved this, based on the reasons that they approved it, why is there an issue with that? Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just, I want to ask that question because...
My opinion, because I've served on P&amp;Z, I was the chairman of P&amp;Z, I'm very familiar with it. I've served on a lot of these committees that deal with these issues, and I feel very strongly that, you know, we don't want to be a hindrance, but we want to protect the city's interests. And I think we can do a little bit better, and this is how most laws get improved. They don't get replaced with new laws, they just get tweaked. And these tweaks that I've suggested are, I think they're fairly minor and subject to the review by the city attorney. We could act on them in short order. I don't know if that's the least of it.
I don't totally agree with the amendments, but I do, I like the direction you're going with that. I think that, again, taking out the subjectivity of it, making it very objective, very straightforward, going forward, that's the best idea. I just question going against P&amp;Z yet again, so maybe we just need to find better alignment. All right, anything else?
I'm finished, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's Mr. Sher.
Well, I kind of got the same concern Councilman Dyer has about if we rezonate commercial, we don't have much, we don't have much, it's, what's the word I'm trying to use? We don't have no control. I mean, as far as what comes in there. Right now, it's a, it's a no... I mean, as far as what comes in there, right now, it's, it's a no-brainer that it's not detrimental to the area, I mean, nobody's complained about it, it's eight to five type thing. Does the SUP have an expiration?
What's he saying?
When, when they're issued and-
Just an owner.
I'm sorry?
Just, just an owner, not an expiration.
No, well-
I mean, is it for, is it go forever?
No, it depends, it depends on how it's issued. So, SUPS can be issued with a, with a date that says, "We will review this," so you have a, a date and time to basically perform and prove that you're going to do what you're supposed to do, et cetera. In this instance, it's a little bit unusual because you've already got an existing business that's already acting the way it is.
Yeah.
But yes, they can be issued on a probationary basis where you say, "This is good for one year." You know, obviously that creates all kinds of difficulties for the person whose livelihood is based on the, that SUP continuing.
On that expiration.
But that, that was the kind of conversation, remember, we had with the Tardai Hotel about offering them a six-month kind of SUP, that kind of, so it is something that can be done, but there's all kinds of, you know-
But currently, no.
Pitfalls and traps where-
I mean, the SUP-
Yeah, the current SUP-
...in 2005 has been-
It was for the owner.
...been working on that forever.
Yeah, it was, well, it was for the owner, for the life of the owner or the business, but not for the land itself.
And part of me listens to what Paul had to say too about, you know, it'd be really hard for them to, for, for a new owner to change the type of business that is in this building because of how it's set up. I struggle with, I struggle with both sides of that a little bit. I'd like to hear from the other council members as well. All right, Councilman King?
Yeah, I think, same concerns. I mean, it, it would be difficult, not impossible, to change the use of the building. The, you know, this is, it, it seems like we always have to make these decisions, rush, 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 last minute because somebody hadn't asked us this earlier or submitted this process. But the simplest thing to get a stop-gap would be is quickly approve the SUP for the next owner. I mean, the SUP's already in place, when the new owner comes in, goes before P&amp;Z, comes before council, so in January, we could approve this. I don't know, I know I would have no problem with it continuing as, as the existing business, the dentist office.
I just want to clarify, what, what was proposed by Councilman Dyer is that it would come directly back to the council, it would not go before P&amp;Z.
Is that, is that permissible?
Yeah, because they're a recommending body and I actually recommend that, that would be my advice to you, is that if you know what you want to do, then you don't need to go to a recommending body to have them consider it and then give you, I mean, it, you can have those discussions offline, you can go talk to them, say, "Hey, we're, as a body, we're thinking about doing this, you know, what are your thoughts?" But they're recommending body to you. If you already have a solution in mind, it's within your, certainly within your purview to enact those, those changes.
Then I guess, as a stop-gap thing, and I agree with everything Herb said related to, we do need to look at this quickly, but I think the quickest thing we could do is simply, at our first meeting in January, extend the SUP somehow.
The owner would have to apply for it.
For, to change the CZO?
To change the CZO.
All the things that we'd have to verify, I mean.
So, so in, so basically just to extend the SUP, whatever is the most-
Well, no, to change, you can't just extend the SUP.
Well, if we needed a new owner was.
Because of changing ownership, you'd have to change your ordinance, and what Brianna just stated is that to change the ordinance, our ordinances state that they can, that, that it must be done through the P&amp;Z, so that's, and that's possible. Like I said, I, that's part of what we'd ask legal to confirm, is can the council simply take this action as, as proposed, or does it need to go to P&amp;Z, and what's, is there a specific timing for it?
So, there would be an ordinance that would grant this SUP to the new owner?
No, what you would do is change your ordinance, is to allow you to grant it.
Right.
So, just like you're today, hearing, there's a process for hearing a zoning change request, that's all laid out in the ordinance, if you want to change your zoning, here's the process, you go, you submit your, your application, your request, the basis, it goes to P&amp;Z, all of that, right? So, what you would be doing is changing the ordinance to then, to allow a current owner who has been granted an SUP to transfer that ownership-
Okay.
-and the SUP.
Yeah, that's not my question. My question is, let's say John Smith's going to be the purchaser of this property.
Right.
And the way the SUP is now is only to the existing owner.
Correct.
So, anytime that property was going to transfer hands, the council back then knew that it would be, SUP would then have to be granted to the new owner.
Yeah, yes, they would, yes, there would-
So, that would be the simplest, now, does that need to go before the review process?
Yes, so basically what would happen is the new owner, and that's where, yeah, that's the challenge, so basically the new owner is buying a business for which he does not have a legal right to practice because the SUP ends. When that owner sells that business, there is no SUP, there's not a transfer, it doesn't exist, it's gone, it's finito, it's in it, it's finished, right? Then they would have to rely on the city's goodwill that, that they can come to you and, and ask basically the same things and that you'll be willing to grant that. That's, that's what the current process consists of. But concurrently, the person who owns that business, the person buying it, isn't being granted anything, they're just ba, they're buying a building, no right to practice until they go through the SUP process in the city council.
But in a process of purchasing property, you always go through the, the period of, you sign a contract and then you could have a two or three month-
Sure.
And in that period, they already have a contract for the purchase of the property, one of the stipulations of the sale is that the property can be granted the new SUP. So, then in that process in January, this SUP then could be extended to the new owner. You already have a purchase contract, all it is, is that instead of being the current owners, it's the new owner, and then that way, we don't have to sit down and worry about quickly speeding along these ordinance changes.
I think the only thing you run into is the ownership of the property, so that typically the person requesting a zoning change or request where is the owner of the property. So, as a person who, who doesn't own the property yet, who's just thinking about buying it, they're putting, I mean, I can understand why maybe this is, was established, because you think about it, well, what if the deal falls through, what if the person changes their mind, et cetera? Now, they've wasted public time and dollars and everything else going through a process that was worthless, right? So, so there may be that issue, I don't know if that's an issue, Brianna, does, does the request for other, of the SUP have to be the current owner, or can be a potential future owner?
So, I think for a zoning change, it can be a potential future owner. For the SUP, I don't know, I don't think it's specified in the ordinance if it has to be the owner or if it can be a different option.
So, if, if it's, if it follows zoning changes, which I, you wouldn't think that an SUP would be more restricted than that, right? It'd probably follow the same process, but we don't know for sure.
Yeah, because I'm sure that this goes on fairly common where, hey, I want to buy this property, but it needs to be rezoned and well, that's going to be part of the stipulation of the sale. But at least that, to me, is the simplest, quickest way to get-
So, rather than changing the ordinance and doing this-
Yeah, because it-
-Councilman Dyer's recommended, just have the new owner go through the SUP process.
Which is going to be public hearings.
They have to go through the-
Public hearings are going to have to be, yeah.
But you can still do the public hearings, all within January and still get this approved by the end of January.
By January 26th.
By the end of January, yes.
Yeah, not the first meeting, last meeting.
Not the first meeting, by the second.
If you're going to do it this way, yes.
Yeah.
If, if P&amp;Z's able-
And no matter what we do, we're going to have to go have public hearings and everything else. So, but this would be just a no-brainer, just, at least from my standpoint, I'd have no problem extending this to the new owners because it's liking kind, so go for it. And then we can sit down and digest all these other things we need to digest and give a little bit more time to change the, the whole, the whole process after that. Which I think is kind of what the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about, but then they said, "No, we can't do that here because that's not what they asked for."
It's not what they asked for.
But they asked for it and that had come to us and it wouldn't have been an issue.
No, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And, I was completely, we're directed comments that the mayor, he's running the show, he's the one who's going around asking for discussion, listening and trying to advise, clarify.
Section nine, paragraph two of the CZO reads, "Any attempt to transfer the permit by sale of the property or other means shall void the permit," period. So, that has been done, and if we're going to apply our less-than-comprehensive zoning ordinance, that SUP is already default, in default.
Can you read that again?
"Any attempt to transfer the permit by sale of the property or other means shall void the permit," period.
Yes and no. I would say that they didn't attempt to transfer the permit, what they did was they attempted to change it, to change the zoning, the underlying zoning, and they were, they met with that, whether or not that's going to be successful is going to be determined tonight.
Correct.
But that is not a transfer of the permit.
Well-
A transfer of the permit hasn't, I would argue that hasn't occurred.
Well, okay, the attempt has occurred.
But that's my, that's my two cents.
That's how I read it, attempt is an attempt, you put it up for sale, that's an attempt to sell the property.
No, but an attempt to sell the permit, yeah, he, he's selling a property, it's not, it depends on whether or not the owner made any representations that the permit went with it, right?
Okay.
And we don't know that.
We heard earlier in, in the mayor's report that the, that business revenue is a much more contributory revenue source for the city of Castroville, and I believe that because this property is already surrounded on three sides by technically business property, it would actually be a better business property generations from now if lots three and four were commercial rather than lot three commercial and lot four residential all by itself in the middle of a commercial zone. So, that's just my position.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez?
In the 16 years I've lived here, it's been a dental clinic. I've worked in dental clinics, you've got oxygen lines in the wall, you've got nitrous oxide lines in the wall, you've got a Malcolm lines to bring up all the Malcolm that's taken out of your teeth into traps and everything in the wall, there's so much in that building that you have no idea if you've never worked in a dental clinic before. It's so many rules and regulations, joint commission of accreditation has to come through, I mean, it's very, very detailed. I agree with all the commercial that is around that building, I see why, no reason why not to make it a commercial, because it's been this business, a commercial business for 16 years. And, I mean, yes, we need to update our zoning ordinances and everything, but if we hinder this individual from continuing a medical practice, then that could shut them off and the word could get out of, oh, Castroville doesn't want to work with businesses, trying to come in and buy new locations, that kind of stuff. So, we, we've got to walk that fine line, we don't want to deter business coming our way. So, is there any way the property owner right now would be willing to delay sale of the property until we can do the hearings or whatever we got to do through November, I mean, January? That way, the new owner can submit, get approval, and then the sale go through.
Are you talking about, well, I just want to be clear, your proposal would be then what Councilwoman King was just discussing, where the new owner requests an SUP, not necessarily that we change our CZO-
Right.
-but they, they just go through the SUP process.
Correct. Because that, by the sounds of it, by the sound, way of everything being taught, that would be the most efficient way to get it done right now, because by the way everything else sounds, if we do it the other way and changing the ordinance and on and on and on, it's not going to be rectified anytime soon.
Do we have an owner's representative or a buyer's representative, so? We, we don't know.
You know, honestly, the fact is that the, the current owner was the one that got the SUP and they should know that there is an SUP in place and they should know the stipulations around that. So, that to me is not an excuse that they are trying to rush us through this. While, you know, my, my own personal opinions about this are different than some other ones, I'm not afraid of that, I feel like we can put enough controls around it, but I don't feel like, I don't, I think that the safest thing that we can do right now is to, to move forward, I think that we do need to change that from being very subjective to being very objective, we can't do that in the right amount of time, so I, I just don't want somebody else to, their emergency to cause long-term problems for the city. So, is there any other discussion?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we table this and request that city staff communicate with the owners about extending the S U-
SUP?
P-
Yeah.
-to the potential buyers.
Having, seeing if they want to come forward and request an SUP.
See if they want to come forward and request an SUP.
Do we have to have a motion to deny, to approve or deny specifically?
You've had a motion, a motion to table, I think you, you treat, you treat that motion first, if there's a second, it's a motion to table, then you follow that process.
All right. Is that a table or?
Take no action, it's a motion to take no action.
Sorry, so all I do is just take a, make a motion, take no action.
Right.
And then the verbal instructions to you all are not part of the motion.
Okay.
So, I'll just, I make a motion to table the action.
All right.
We're striking that motion, is what you're doing, because you made a motion to table.
He's modifying it.
I'm modifying it.
Well, and technically a table, anyway.
The table you're supposed to leave, come back before you-
In the meeting, correct.
Not table, I, so-
And I know we've tabled stuff in the past, but, but what you're, take no action is truly the motion you're making, because you're not saying table it for this meeting, for later action in this meeting, you're saying, "I don't want to take action on this tonight, I want staff to go back," and that is a motion for no action.
So, I make a motion that we-
He made a motion to deny that because he's not going to come back with this motion, he's going to come back with another one.
No, well, it's up to you, I mean, the, the thing is, if you deny, if you deny the part, the request, then that is it, right? That ends it. If you, if he's take no action, then there, you, he can still come back at the next meeting and say, "You know what, I don't want an SUP, I think this should be commercial and I, you know, it's been here 16 years and I have no chance," you know, we don't know what they're going to say, I'm providing, it's one, one option, right? And they won't, may say they want to proceed it, yeah.
That we take no action.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, eyes have it.
All right, so we will, we will go back and visit with the owners and the buyer and see what they want to do, and this will either come back as another, either we'll finish this process or we'll inform you that they're going to go through an SUP process.
And I think, you know, just as a straw pull, I mean, I can say I would be in favor of that if they brought back, I would favor of giving the SUP to the new owners, I think it sounds like all the council would, but it's, so it would seem like it would just, it's just a formality process.
I don't know why they applied for the zoning change rather than the SUP, because that would have been a slam dunk.
I don't know either, I, I just know if I owned the property, they might have just assumed, hey, this is going to be a no-brainer, it's been here forever, I, who knows? It is what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
At six-ten, right?
Yeah, sorry, I was just making a note-
Aye.
-of future agenda item. All right, so next item.
Thank you, Brianna.
Yeah, thanks, Brianna. Number 10, discuss, and this is at, sorry, six-ten, discuss and take appropriate action on a marketing agreement with Service Line Warranties of America to provide Castroville utility customers warranty service options.
All right, so I do have the present, you have everything in your packet, I, I have the PowerPoint that I sent you all, it's in the packet, if you want to review that, we can. But what this is, in essence, it's an insurance program, or warranty program, if you want to think about it that way, for various, they have various products, they have, they'll insure your electrical system, your water system, your sewer system in your house, and they'll, the, the city basically opts in, there's no cost to the city, it can be a revenue driver for the city, we can, we can make 50 cents per warranty item per location per month. I don't recommend that, in part because we just made all those rate changes and we don't want to put an added burden on folks. So, this would be an, an optional opt-in for our customers, and what we're agreeing to do, in essence, it's a marketing agreement, so we're saying as a city, we will provide our utility customer information to this third party who would then market to our utility customers these warranty programs. Now, the warranty programs, they're in, golly, I think this, now I can't, I'm rusty on the stats, there's a Texas, you have 96,000 customers or something in Texas, they've been operating here for something like 15 or 16 years, I believe, they're, they're a member or a affiliate of the National League of Cities, so this is through HomeServe, so that's a, I think a fairly recognizable name for some. So, it's a reputable program, it's, it's been implemented in a number of cities across Texas, and the reason that the staff is even bringing it to your attention is because we know- it to your attention is because we know this is a time when the city's going to be making a significant investment in our water and sewer system. And we thought it might be prudent to give our utility customers the same opportunity by warranting their lines so that as they have issues, if they, you know, in some cases they're the same age as what we're replacing, so it's not really if, it's when they have issues, they will have a warranty program in place that will cover the large majority of that cost of repair or replacement. But again, it's, it's just, it's something for you to consider. You don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight. I think this is on, is it discussion and appropriate action? I forgot. Yeah. So you could take action on it tonight or if you just want to think about it and bring it back. The lady that is kind of their marketing rep, she's out of state. I can't remember which state she's based in. She offered to come in tonight. I said that was not necessary. We don't need them to, apparently they were excited to see Castroville, but. Told them all about our hotel and spa and they're like, yeah, please. Like, no, I don't think we're okay.
So I really like the idea of being able to provide something to them. What I don't like is doing a marketing agreement that gives them carte blanche because essentially what we're doing is we're giving away information for them unless they have some kind of agreement that limits any communication or the use of that specifically and only to this.
Okay.
I think that that would be okay.
I think that's what they do. I'll have to see what the limitations of the use of that, those materials are, but they are specifically for their market. It's not that we're selling the, this data because we aren't selling it. We don't get any compensation for it.
Or giving it. I mean, we just have to be really careful about understanding exactly.
It's specific to this program, but, and within the program, they have kind of a, an adopted approach to how they do their marketing. So it's not, they're, you're not going to get a periodical every two weeks or even every two months. They have a process where they, the mailers, every six months, wherever it is, they have a certain timeframe.
I just know I bought my car and now I can't seem to.
It's not one of those.
Get away from my home, my car warranty.
It's not one of those. Not all affiliates.
It's every couple of weeks.
So I think that we just need to, I think that it's great that we can offer something like this. I don't think that until we fully vet that through, we should, I briefly looked it there. I didn't see anything about limitation of information. So I think that if, if we talk it through, I would not recommend voting in favor of this right now, but I think that we should talk through some of what our thoughts are on this so that we can give direction to move forward with it.
Has our city attorney looked at this?
I don't know if she has or not. I mean, it was in the packet, but I didn't reach out to her separately and say, hey, review this. Because we would do that. So if we were to approve the contract, it'd be based on the attorney's approval, right?
I have the same concerns about giving personal data.
Right.
Name and address and that, yeah.
Customer use information.
But still, yeah, I, right now that's a slippery slope anywhere, any business that you do in the world. So I'd like to hear her thoughts on it.
Councilman Deck?
I personally am opposed to doing this. I've lived in my house in San, in this town now for 23 years. I've had a lot of problems with utilities and sometimes they were my problem and sometimes they were the city's problem. But every time I've had a problem, I've been able to sit down with the city, have a rational discussion, and the city always was fair and made rational decisions about whether it was my problem or their problem. And then we went on and fixed it. I'm very comfortable that the city knows how to do that and I don't want to have a third party. And this is the reason why. If this city, it becomes a city-sponsored warranty once we vote, if this becomes true, I'm afraid there will be a bias against people who do not choose to use it. And there may not be that opportunity to have the rational discussion because, well, you had a chance to buy a warranty and you didn't buy it. So it's your problem. I don't want to see that.
But isn't there a clear delineation between inside the meter and outside the meter?
Oh, yeah. It's not quite that clear if you read these documents. It's not that simple.
All right. I do think it's interesting that you've had a good relationship with the city, but now you think that the city's going to turn, once, once we start this, we'll just be evil and be like, well, yeah, but I, yeah. I don't, I don't see that, I do not, I personally don't see that bias grouping in. But again, this is just a proposal. If, I don't care, I'm not married to it. I don't care if you like it or don't like it. It was, the staff brought it forward for all the reasons I said. It's an opportunity for the public to have some kind of, be exposed to that. And it is a good program. Again, they've got, you can kind of do your digging and call different cities who have used it and see what experiences they've had.
So are you opposed to, to using this yourself because of that reason? Or are you?
I'm just fearful that, that if, if there is such a program and the homeowners that choose not to use it, I'm just fearful they're going to be discriminated against, maybe inadvertently. I'm not accusing the city of being a cringe.
Thank you.
I'm saying, you know, it could, it could be perceived, well, you had a chance to buy a warranty and you chose not to. So.
But would we actually know who has warranties and who doesn't have warranties?
Uh, yeah, we probably would because again, there is a compensatory opportunity there. So obviously they have some way of collecting that data and advising on how many customers have signed up and that kind of thing. And I think that's a good thing for us to keep tabs on. We don't necessarily need to know where they are, but how many there are is.
When I think that the separation of, the separation of that information, I don't agree with charging people, I don't agree with the city making money on this. I think this is an opportunity that we can provide to folks. If we can create protection for the people that could opt into this, it would be on their, their decision to do it or not. I don't think that we should know who does it. We should know how many do it. And I also don't think that they should be able to utilize their information for something else. So I think that if we draw strict bounds around that so that we can, this is a great conversation because we want to figure out what bad could happen so we can avoid that if we do offer something like this. But I think that it would be great. I probably would take advantage of at least certain aspects of that myself just because I know I've got a house that is a little bit older that might have some plumbing issues.
The other thing I'll, I'll, never mind. I thought it was in here. It's on page six of the marketing agreement is, lays out what the different costs or the different programs are.
What's the page number?
I don't have those in front of me, but.
It's second from the last page of the whole thing. The second from the last page of the whole thing.
Thank you.
Well, he's looking at that. Do we have, do you have any discussion right now or you want to look at that for a second? I'll come back.
No, I got some, I got some questions. Did, did they solicit us or do we solicit them?
They solicited us. And I've been solicited by them in the past in other cities I've worked in. Like I said, it, it's a reputable program. It's like any other warranty line program that's out there. They have a pretty good customer base. They've got a, she talked about how many millions of dollars they've paid out in Texas so far. It's quite a bit.
I'm not a warranty person, so.
Yeah. And that's the thing. Some people are, some people aren't.
Kind of like Darren. I get them calls every two months.
I don't see any cost in here.
Second from the last page on exhibit A.
Yeah.
That's in the exhibit, not in the presentation.
No, it's, that's why I wanted to bring your attention. So just, just for the benefit of the public listening or watching.
Second to the last page in your packet.
The various programs, and they have A through H. They have external water lines, external sewer and septic, interior plumbing, gas lines, interior to electrical, heating plan, cooling plan, water heater plan, et cetera. Those range, per month, the prices range from $4.49 for the gas line plan all the way up to $12.49 for the cooling plan, which I believe covers AC and that kind of stuff. So it's HomeServe, if you're familiar with it.
They call those the initial rates.
Yeah, those are initial rates.
Yeah, initial rates. That's true. So, and like anything else, you know, stuff can change.
So you could opt in or opt out?
Yes. And there is no minimum number of customers that have to participate for the city. If you said, hey, we want to be able to offer this, then they would start, we would share the list. They would start marketing and they'd get whatever number of customers they got. There, there's no minimum participation for them to be involved in the city.
Can they get this without the city's participation?
No, because it's our, it's our customer utility. I don't know.
So that's why I think that it's good.
Well, and I don't know. Honestly, I don't know. Because some of that's, like, we have privacy stuff in place, but not everybody opts in for that privacy, right?
Most everybody does, but not, and they changed the privacy.
I, yeah, I just.
They've changed the privacy and so we have to go check it.
Right.
Yeah. I just think we need to draw some really, really.
I, and I, I'm not disagreeing. I think that's good advice.
Well, in my opinion, if somebody wants to chase some kind of extended warranty, they can do it on their own. Why, why do we need to deal with this at a city level? I would be totally against this.
This is just allowing people to do it. That's why I was asking the question.
But they can go do that now.
Through?
Wherever. I mean, there's millions. Just get your Googler out. There's millions.
Cool. I just, I am not in, I'm not in favor of forcing something and giving something and charging yet another charge, but there are some people that would opt into this. I would take a look at this. There's a lot of this that I personally wouldn't do it, but I don't want to make a decision for somebody else. And if we could open up that opportunity, I don't think it's a terrible thing as long as we put protections around them to make sure that they're not getting the every 30-second phone call about anything.
I don't know that we need to bait each other on it. I think everybody has their opinion. Did we hear from Phil and Paul and Gina?
Sure.
Yeah. Hey, Wesley Hall?
Now, first off, I think in any area it says that we have to, the city has the right to approve any marketing material. So that, that would, I kind of like Darren thought, in fact, this is just an additional opportunity. They could do a mass marketing mailing to everybody in our zip code here and hit everybody in Castroville and, and do this just like we get insurance from State Farm and everybody else that comes through. So that, but that could get the name and so forth, I guess is what they're asking for. I kind of see it would be a service to the citizens.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, I think it's co-branded marketing. So that's part of the agreement is that, like, they would, we might send their marketing with our utility bill. It might say, city of, you know, it'd be clear, we get to approve the marketing. But that's, that's, that's the thing. When you're opting in, you're really saying, hey, we're willing to partner with you on this. We also want certain, so one of the things I, you know, conveyed was, I don't think, I don't know what the city council's going to say, but I'm going to recommend we don't add an adder, make this a revenue stream for the city. And in, in recognition of that, I want to, instead of adding that, I want to show that the city is supplementing this cost because it could be higher. If the city wanted it, it would be a dollar or 50 cents more per month per thing. I want to say that, no, the city's supplementing this as a way of saying, you know, to our, to our customers, here's one more service that we're offering to you, making available to you. It's optional. But I just think it builds goodwill. But again, I mean, there's definitely some differing opinions and it's.
Well, again, like, for instance, I've never bought, or no, one time I bought an extended warranty on a truck and I never used it. And that's the last time I ever used it. And it's just risk. Who wants to take the risk? You want to be completely covered no matter what happens or do you want to risk? Just like going to Las Vegas.
Well, your car warranty expires like the, the week after or the week before something.
One thousand and miles. And it's a hundred dollar deductible.
It's always right before you need something.
Yeah. But Scott, if you don't mind, I mean, I would not, I would be open to discussing this in the future when we had some more background, but I guess if we could talk to one of the other cities, one or two of the other cities and just ask them what their experience is. Yeah, this is no brainer. And I also go on record, I don't think the city ought to add, put an add-on fee on this or get a kickback fee or, or referral fee or anything. And I think this should be a, a neutral cost to the city is, is we're just providing it as a service to those who wish to use it. But I would like to know what other cities' thoughts. You know, it's a three-year commitment and then, you know, there's one-year extensions after that. If there's no, you know, each party has 90 days, but that's three years. And if we get into this, oh my gosh, why do we do this? Well, it's three years before we can back out. So.
Uvalde is on this list.
Honda is too.
Yeah, maybe we can call some of those people you know over there and see.
By we?
You know, this is.
I'll call, I know, I'll call, but.
The Scott, call Scott. You can call Scott.
Yeah. And Scott, I, I will, I'll reach out, but I also think it'd be beneficial for you all to reach out because especially with some of the concerns that I've heard. I mean, find out, is this useful to your, to your citizens? Do you think this is a good idea?
I prefer to blame you.
Thank you.
You have a second, Carrie?
Thank you.
I think that since we've opened this can of worms, we'll probably be hearing from some of our citizens. The, it's really, it's really an endorsement I see by the city. I do, I'm concerned with the sharing of personal.
That's exactly how you should see it. I think it is an endorsement. That's what I'm saying. I, I think there is a mutual branding. They expect us to endorse them and say that this is good.
But I do concern myself with the, their availability to personal use data. And it sounds like they'll have availability to all of it. So that bothers me. That's all.
Councilman Martinez?
That's like I said, I'd like to see what the attorney's thoughts are on this. For one, for the availability of our citizens' data. Also, what's the cost after the initial cost? How much does it go up?
Yeah, I think we asked that question. I, I just want to be clear. I think we did ask that question about pricing changes and how often they change. And there've been very few changes in their pricing model. So it's a pretty static rate that they charge. I know it says initial, but they have to say that because you never know how things are, especially right now with the inflation climate. But they've had, that's one of the things I could clarify is how many pricing changes they had. If you were to show the same illustration five years ago, what would the pricing have been? You know, that kind of thing. I can get an idea of those fluctuations.
And then, like the hospital, we can't turn around and say, oh, we, we push out Blue Cross Blue Shield, all this other stuff. We got to have some unbiasedness there. So, you know, for us to turn around and offer this, well, then technically we should offer State Farm, USAA and all that because they also have insurance for utility pipe break and everything like that. So that's, that's where I, I have a problem too of endorsing one instead of endorsing all type thing because one's going to be cheaper than the other.
Great. All right. Then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny the marketing agreement with Service Line Warranties of America to provide Castroville utility customers warranty service options.
Do you want to deny it, which closes off the conversation, or do you want to take no action?
No, it says appropriate action's got to be taken.
Yeah, you can.
Do you want to, do you want to leave some questions? Do you want to bring us back with some of the answers to some of your questions or do you want to just?
I don't. I don't need no more questions. They're answers.
Okay.
All right. So I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
You have opposed?
Yeah.
Motion fails.
I'd like to move that we take no action and seek some additional information as discussed.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll make, I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All right.
I'll clarify for the, just for staff, for everybody listening. What we'll do is I'll, I'll get some more parameters around the use of customer data, the limits to the use of that data and limits to the marketing, how that marketing, how often it occurs, when it occurs. Some more information about pricing, you know, the initial pricing versus, you know, how static is that pricing or has it been in the past? I know what I'll get is no past performance, past performance, no indication of the future, future performance, right? That's a, that's an old financial advisor line. But, and then we'll also get the attorney to look at that as well. And I'll reach out to Honda. I mean, they're our next door neighbor and see what they have to say about it. And then Uvalde, I think the guy, well, both, I think the guys, the people in Uvalde and Honda are fairly due to that community, but I'll, I'll ask them both.
And there's five of these. It's not even in this. It's not offered. If you'll look at your.
What's that?
In these products, there's A through H. And if you'll look at the numbers beside it down at the very bottom of the page, two through five, it says they're not offered.
That's right.
So you don't, you only have three, three things right now that's offered. I don't know what.
Yeah, that might be expanded on.
Yeah, because it's interior.
Maybe a state of Texas. I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
You voting?
Oh, nay. I was reading.
Three ayes and two nays.
Three ayes and two nays. Okay. Motion passes.
This is for no action and to bring back.
Yes.
Information.
Correct. All right. And next item at six 31 is discussion and appropriate action on authorizing city administrator to advertise for bids for Lafayette Waterline Replacement Project.
So this is one of the major projects that has been discussed as part of the CIP plan. It's, keep in mind, there were going to be some shut-off valves that were installed prior to the beginning here. There was kind of the engineering design plan at the time was we need some more shut-off valves so that when there's an issue, we can localize the issue. When they got in there to really start looking at that project and said, oh goodness, that's like, that's like putting shut-off valves on a, on a sieve. Like it's, it's just, it's not going to help. We need to replace the line. So we redirected it at your, at your direction after requesting it to redirect those engineering dollars towards a replacement plan. So that plan has now been developed. Again, this will be one of the major items recognized in the CIP. And what we're looking for is just permission to take it out to bid. And what we're looking for is just permission to take it out to bid and then go through the normal bid process.
Scared what the bid's going to be.
Yep. Well, another reason why.
What I'm hearing from you.
So one of the things, you'll see me, I don't want to wait, you know, the discussion was, well, do you want to wait until we have a CIP, like a comprehensive CIP and, you know, in this market? No, I don't want to wait on anything. I don't want to wait to buy parts. I don't want to wait to, yeah. And once you all approve and give us spending authority, I want to, let's go do that now because all that's happening is it's going up in price. There's, there's no indication whatsoever that price is going to go down 12 months from now. So that's the concern. I don't want to wait longer than that.
Agree?
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I would like to move that we authorize the city administrator to advertise for bids for the Lafayette Waterline Replacement Project.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I got, I got a question.
Yep.
I think it's a good plan. And I read it, I'm not an engineer, but it looks like it's very sensible. I got a question though. What is our engineering estimated should cost? And what, what inflation did we base it on? That usually is something we know before we send it out, right?
Every time an engineer gives me a number, I just say, did you add 20%? Because, you know, or 40, you know, because they're, it's their best estimate. Let me see if I have that for you.
Usually it's in the paper, but I read through it, everything, I can't find it.
I don't know if it's in there or not, I'll be honest.
Looking for the should cost and what was the est, what was the inflation that we anticipated that they would be bidding to?
I don't think we asked either. Yeah, that's the whole thing. It's the bid process, it's a quick turnaround, right? And so they're going to quote that, the price is good till type.
30 days, 60 days.
Right, and so we'll know. And, yeah, I can tell you, for instance, the $2.5 million generator, you know, and all the electrical work, it basically said, you know, this price is, this bid is subject to change based on market conditions. So they didn't even give me a firm fixed price for a period of time. It's, we're going to give you this price, but, you know, it could change because, you know, some of the parts that they're having to order, again, have year-long lead times, so.
But they're looking at $700,000, thereabouts.
What?
For the waterline replacement.
I believe so.
I, I.
That's on the, the cover sheet.
Okay.
Says fiscal impact, source of funding, $700,000.
So that's the, that's the estimate right now.
Okay, so it's, we're thinking it should cost around $700,000? That's what that means?
Should.
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 But we're going out for bids.
So we can find out for sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I was about to.
Thank you. All right, so we are at 636. Our next item is discuss and take appropriate action on application submitted for open positions on city boards and commissions.
Yes, you have two applications here for, both people would like to be on the HLC. Houston Marchman, which has been previously on this board and has moved back, would like to go in. You have a vacancy on the full board and then you have two alternates. Also, I have a application that came in from, and I'm going to have to look, I'm sorry, Anastasia.
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez. I did contact her to make sure she was still available. I have not met her. I thought she might come tonight. I told her when our meeting was. She does live at, on Naples Street because the original address was outside our city limits. So when I contacted her, now she, depending on, she would like to be on the library board too. She has both. It's up to you all on the Historic Landmark Commission. I know a lot of times you have criteria of being in a historic, preferably home. I have experience with it. She does not, but she said she was willing to serve on that board and she was willing to serve on the library. I know the library does need members also. And at the time when I talked to her originally, I didn't, I told her that that was not a issue with her living outside of town with the library. But it's up to you all.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Houston Marchman to the Historic Landmark Commission for the open seat there.
Full board?
Full board. Excuse me. And, and, or, and select Anastasia Rodriguez for the full board position on the library board.
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion?
I'll tell you, I served with Houston on the HLC and he is phenomenal, thorough, so I think that's a great choice.
All right.
I just want to thank, I mean, I know you feel this way, but so, I just want to thank anybody who comes forward and is willing to serve on these boards. We're in desperate need of public input in these boards and it's not, it truly is a thankless job. A lot of hours are given. Sometimes you don't even hear thanks from the council, even though they mean it and they, they are grateful for it. We're very grateful to UZ and their time on the matters that we discussed tonight. We know they give their time and attention to it, and so we're appreciative anytime someone steps forward and puts their name in that.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all, let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still need members though, keep, keep trying.
We have open positions if anybody wants.
We're getting closer to just alternate positions that are left, so that's nice.
Which board position do we still have open?
I was going to ask me that. I know we have alternate positions, of course, on the HLC and also the, we, I believe in parks, we need someone. And also on the library. The P&amp;Z is full, the zoning board of adjustments is full, the airport board is full, so.
It did take the P&amp;Z half an hour to get a quorum last night.
Yes, and I heard about that and did not realize that some of them either forgot or didn't make it. Not all time.
That one or two of them were stuck in traffic, yeah.
Yeah.
There's traffic here?
Out of Centon Town, yes. We have some members that come in from there.
Seriously.
But they made it.
Can we put that as an agenda?
That's high on our priority list.
All right.
A little on our capability.
Fair County, we have no control.
Yeah.
All right, now at 640, we have presentation and discussion on prior downtown revitalization and other planning efforts.
Do you want to discuss the redistricting first and do this a little out of order?
Sure, yeah.
And that way we just close out on the, on the next topic and the staff reports.
Wait, say it again?
That way we end the meeting with the next two items.
Okay.
Because I don't know how, I don't.
You want to present one time and not twice?
Well, and I just think we could end up getting really long-winded on the other and I think redistricting's important and we should cover that.
All right, perfect. So let's skip that one and we'll go to, just still at 640, discussion on 2020 census count and redistricting process.
If you could have the presentation, if you like, that she sent.
And you have the hard copy in front of you too, could go in trip, we get it up. Of course, this always happens when we go through the census count. We did it 10 years ago in 2010. And our population has changed to, I think it's 2980, I'm going to have to look, I'm sorry.
I was kind of surprised at that. I thought that, I thought that we were a little bit higher than that.
Blame the Democrats.
Well, the only thing is, if you look at the, I say the signs on the highway, that has never been correct. And so it looks like we have over 3,000 people already and that was not a correct number. I'm not sure who truly ever put it up. So our original one was 2785. So it, we did get people, but it's now 29.
I do believe that Arnie, Arnie, when they were still doing the census, that we had about a 20% turnout so far, so the rest of that is conjecture.
I'm sorry, what?
At the time that, that the census was being finalized, this area had about a 20% response rate. So the Census Bureau basically.
Well, so, I, I was pointing to blame the Democrats, but the fact of the matter is it did become political. I spoke with a state agency representative, he's not to be named, but that person told me that they were given one set of numbers from the census office and then told not to take any, and then basically that was repealed post haste. And the whole, and I think this is something that you'll probably read about in the news because the state, the governor and the state of Texas is concerned about it. Because then those numbers were taken back and massaged and given to us again. There's no, there's actually no debate that this census, the data, the time it took to get the data as a result of the census was much longer this time around. The data was not released forthrightly, if you will, but whatever.
I know the last census we did, I had to go back and contradict them and had to go back and, because they left out some of the apartment complex, they showed it in the county, so I did have to go back and they agreed and changed it. And that's how we ended up with the 2785. And this time it's 2954. And in that slide presentation that's up here and in front of you, it shows how many is in each district. And of course, part of this process is they need to make sure that they're semi-balanced. There's a 17% differential that you can't go over. So in your packets, there's three little maps that I tried to highlight. There's going to be, the minimum change is the three blocks that will come from District 3 and be moved over to District 5. And it's approximately 40 people.
Is.
It's.
No.
No? No?
I'm trying not to get trouble. I don't understand. Why, why you break it out by race? It makes no sense to me. It should be by number of people. If it really doesn't matter.
Well, part of it.
And if we're really not supposed to see this, then why are we keep doing it? Why are we instituting these legacy?
Well, I need to make sure. I mean, it is part of it.
Like a hot Scott, Scott, right?
It is part of it. It is, it is a part of it. And because you want to make sure that everybody has the right to vote. It's a one-on-one, of course. And so in this, the three little blocks are from, it's on Naples and Mexico. And that's the easiest way to do it. We try not to. The last time I think we had to move 18 people and that was in District, I want to say 5 and 2, I believe, and that's when it went across the highway. But we don't do this ourselves. We have our attorney's office, they provide this information for us and do it each year or when it comes about.
Can you go back to the one that has the map?
There, I think there's two maps, maybe.
And one you're proposing.
Yeah, I was looking to see if it was.
And you all who I'm losing, going to her, he's a nice guy, so he'll take care of you. Those 40 people.
In our packet, it's, there's one. I'm trying to.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
See it.
Is it this map?
Yeah, you can just barely see it. It's really, really light.
So you're giving me three blocks on the east side of my district on, between Gentiles and Naples.
It's right here.
Yeah.
It'll be Mexico and.
How do you?
And that gets me approximately 35.
You can see that, you can't see. It's right there beside the.
Between the yellow and the purple.
Wouldn't it be this one?
Herb's got it, Herb's got it.
Okay, I can't see that.
Herb's got it.
You can't do that.
Herb's got it.
It don't work on the TV.
It won't work on the TV, y'all.
The light won't stay on.
You got the shading top right?
It won't work on.
It won't stay on, I got no battery.
He's right there, right above there.
Right, it's, you see the pink and yellow?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I see him now.
A little bit of beige there between the purple and the yellow, so.
No, she's, that wasn't purple. She's.
Pink, she did.
Now, I would have gone with purple.
Oh, it's these, hold on, it's these.
Yeah, you can see they're all.
There you go.
There you go. There you go. Good job, Scott.
Use the cursor, you got it.
In your packet.
I didn't know where they were.
It is in your packet.
I got it.
I tried and I packed it, it's pink. So you can see them.
Circle them again, Scott. The Hoag House, then the Salzman House, and then the.
It's a block. It's all the blocks. It's these three blocks.
Crystal Stutes, the, the three blocks.
And I don't want to gloss over Councilman King's endorsement of Councilman, about Councilman Dyer.
You guys, you'll take good care of it.
Luckily, it doesn't change any of our districts to where we lose our townspeople.
Right.
I want to hold it in.
Did they really?
And this is something that we're going to have to go through probably fairly, like, probably every year or two going forward because we've got so much addition coming in, so.
No.
No, we don't?
No, I asked that question.
Oh, really?
Because I thought we would be doing that when, when they came in.
Is it 10 years?
And our attorney said that, no, it's every, when the census comes.
10 years from now, Todd will be representing about 15, 16 people.
It's only as good as the census.
Do those all go into his? Wow.
Well, then they will change, of course, but, and that's not to say that the city couldn't have initiated and spent the money because.
All right.
And the thing that I, I want to make sure that people are very clear on this is not council make the decision, this is no unilateral.
Well, again, if you go through the slides, if you want me to do that, I'll do that. Because it, yeah, it wasn't, I think the city secretary just stated that we didn't do this, it was staff action. do this, it was staff action. The city attorney did this, uh, you know, they processed it according to the current federal and state laws, um, to see what their ideal size is. Uh, it's five ninety-one, and the current was five seventy-two. So, there are about nineteen persons below the ideal size. That's a de, that was a deviation. So, then they calculate that, they're trying to figure out what it, how do you fix that, right? And, uh, and do that in a way that's fair and equal and allows everybody the same opportunities.
Well, and we'll come back in January and have a public hearing and, and then adopt the, the new, uh, voting map, and then I will send the information to, we'll have it in a file to send over for the voting. Uh, I know the county is also having to do this because of all the growth, and they're in the process also. I think they've already passed, uh, they've seen their maps, I'm not sure, and talking to them over there, so...
Nice picture there.
It's several people.
Mm-hmm.
They put that, they put that together in our attorney's office.
The next presentation is terrible. I'll just tell you, I did it, it's terrible.
I was impressed that they found it.
This one's very good.
You can't, you can't level up to that.
I'm not particularly skilled there.
I don't know how they exactly calculate everything, it is, it can be complicated, but they do it.
All right. Uh, is there anything else you wanted to go over with this, Scott? All right? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'm fully clicking through this, so everybody who's watching can...
This was just more of a discussion. I don't know that you would know what is coming, and that, uh, we are gonna need to do it, and, and in January, we'll have the pub- we'll, I'll publish the public hearing, and, you know, it, it's pretty much, it's our one good option, so...
Your drone picture of the church was awesome.
Yeah, that was Matt Hades. Anybody who has any questions, uh, we would refer them to our, well, you can call the City Secretary, but we recommend you call, uh, our attorney's office, two one zero two two seven three two four three.
When is this official?
We will have a public hearing.
In January.
In January. She first said that at Talk's Book Review.
It's the first meeting in January because we do it as quickly so that when they do the mass, well, when they do the mass, uh, voter's card, we're gonna try to get it as quickly possible, so, you know, for the made, especially for the made, so...
Absolutely. Todd was impressed with the picture of the church.
It was nice.
It was nice.
I don't know where our attorney's down there, but they did ask, I sent something about it.
All right, next item at six fifty is, uh, presentation and discussion on prior downtown revitalization and other planning efforts.
So, I did warn you, this is gonna be kinda stale, and the, uh, the presentation reflects that. Um, so, I was at...
Sure, black and white.
There it goes, okay. Um, I was asking why are we doing this, what's the purpose? And the, the real purpose for me is, uh, yeah, as part of the capital planning process, I, I earmarked some funds for planning, and we discussed that. And one of the, uh, areas of planning, you, we talked about this group that's investing in the downtown. They've already approached the city to see what kind of partnerships could be formed there. And, uh, yeah, I, I, although I personally support their efforts, I, I think it's great to see private businesses. I think all it does is increase the property values, which, of course, I'm, I'm always gonna be for, as your administrator. But, um, beyond that, when you start talking about improvements to public infrastructure, whether it's streets, or water, or sewer, or any of that, I, I think the cities should leave those efforts. You know, it's, it's good to have the private, uh, folks encouraging us to do that, but it needs to be a city, uh, plan that then they, they, they help support, as opposed to a plan they come up with that we help support. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So, in that effort, I, in that vein, I, I had suggested seeing kind of the writing of the wall with this effort that was ongoing at the time, uh, the need for downtown planning. What I was unaware of was that there was a prior downtown revitalization planning effort. Now, as I have shared with you all, and as we will see, um, it's a little bit of a misnomer because that, that downtown planning effort, um, was, was much larger in scope. It was more like a comprehensive plan, in fact, and, and it, very, very thorough. But it was a bunch of students finishing out their thesis. I think it was a master's class, is what I would have to estimate. I've done a, I've done a similar process, uh, in my educational track, but, so, what I did was, there was four plans that, um, I ended up looking at, um, and these are in chronological order. And what I, what, what I did for you all is kind of just take the highlights, just the, the meat and potatoes of the recommendations that were distilled out of each of these plans. And so, that's all you have in this kind of, this, and I was trying to, again, do it in such a way that, um, to make it as short as possible. So, there's thirty-two slides. I do not wanna read all of these. Um, but I am, one, I wanted to kinda, I, I figured it would be beneficial for us to understand, well, where is the thirty, the current city council? Uh, how did, how do you all feel about some of these ideas that were brought up, brought forward in the past? Because there are, they are different. Even though there's some common themes in the prior planning efforts, almost all of them talk about our historical, uh, culture, our historic culture, and the need to preserve it, and the need to have rules and regulations around it. And there's different methodologies that, that each one of them kind of identified, but that certainly was, was prominent. Um, the idea of creating a sense of place through portal monuments and, um, improving some of our parks and our aesthetics, uh, for our streets and streetscaping, that was a pretty predominant theme among the various planning efforts. So, there's definitely some themes, but again, when you get down to the details, the details vary. And, um, so, again, I thought it would be beneficial to get some of your input. I did make note of, uh, and I have the actual plans open, so if we wanted to look at any aspect of any of these plans, um, they're on, I have it on my laptop. But I did make note of several of the visuals from these plans, um, that, that I will bring up in just a minute. So, the first plan was a, uh, thank you, Chuck, uh, was a Visionaries and Preservation Casperville Historic Preservation Action Plan. This was a Texas, Texas Historical Commission Action Plan that was published in October two thousand and two, and it really just looked at historic preservation. So, it wasn't a comprehensive plan, it didn't, it just really looked at the aspect of historical preservation. And they established, interestingly, they did establish a vision statement, and to the extent that we've been talking about vision statements for the city, et cetera, I thought it was, uh, pertinent, germane, whatever, to, to, to talk about what they had done. So, they established Casperville as a community where its residents are leaders in preserving and protecting their unique historic, cultural, natural environment, and effectively use it as the foundation for economic prosperity, tourism, managed growth, and an excellent quality of life. Casperville is a community that simultaneously maintains its rural identity and sense of place while shaping and benefiting from mutual growth. It's definitely aspirational, but, um, it's not all that different. There's some similarity between that statement and the statement you all identified. And then they had, uh, six primary goals. Protect the historic character and buildings of Casperville through progressive preservation policies. Effectively communicate and educate the public. Develop heritage, tourism, and encourage economic development. Undertake physical improvements and enhance Casperville's character. Be proactive about shaping growth. And develop a coordinating committee to implement Casperville Preservation Plan. And then they, they further developed each of those. I'm not gonna read these. But there were six. So, you have six pages where you see the five point one through five point four, et cetera.
And these are all, just for clarification for people that are watching, these are all on the website under...
Yes, thank you.
Community Development, under Planning.
Planning, yeah. So, all these are the publicly available plans. Um, and there, there are a couple other planning efforts that have been made, um, but these were the main ones that I thought were, um, related to kind of what we're, we're gonna talk about as far as downtown. So, then we have this downtown conservation and revitalization study. Again, this was in two thousand and ten, uh, the Texas A&amp;M College of Architecture, uh, it was a student project. It's four hundred and fifteen pages. Uh, they did extensive research. I mean, the, the things that they came back with, when they started identifying the culture, I mean, just the topography of it, it is really good, I, I think, really good work. I don't know what bearing it has on downtown revitalization, but it's really good work that is museum quality. Like, you could put that in a book and sell it to people about, you know, Casperville, and it could be like, I don't know, someone who enjoys that kind of stuff, they could, they could read to their heart's content. But, um, they did, kind of as one of the summary areas, and it's, and it's interesting 'cause a lot of the document is all that stuff I talked about, this well-written, nothing that can, you know, thinking in Spanish, nada que ver, nothing to do with, uh, downtown revitalization. But then they had this, this, these, these, uh, twelve design areas, um, which almost seemed to be, I don't know, just a separate project within a project. Um, but I thought these were interesting. Gateways to the city, roadside treatment of Highway ninety. There's a lot of very good visuals with each, with each of these, and that's some of the pictures I'm gonna show you in a minute. Um, but they, but if I were to, to recommend you study any aspect of, of this design, I'd say go to these areas and just look at these pages. You don't have to read every word, just, just kinda glance through them and, and, and track your thoughts and feelings as you look at those, those pictures that they, that they came up with, and then, um, think about whether or not any of that is attractive to you, right? Um, and then in two thousand and eleven, uh, there was a Casperville, uh, Casperville Lancer Plan that actually kind of began in two thousand and eight, um, and I believe wasn't published in two thousand until two thousand and twelve. Uh, so, it began when Paul Hoffman was here, uh, and I think Mayor Lee was, uh, the mayor during this entire effort.
Yep.
And then he was brought back because, you know, as one does, he was brought back for the next one I'm gonna talk about in two thousand and sixteen. Um, so, he's been a, a, kind of a constant threat. I think if you're, if I were on council and had any questions about, especially about master planning efforts, he would be a resource that, that I would wanna seek out and talk to. If you, again, are interested in some of the things they came up with, and how they came up with them, why. But they had, uh, four strategic areas of focus, Casperville today, the trends tomorrow, and, and the action plan. And then they developed some strategic goals and policies in six different areas, natural, cultural, and social resources, community growth and land use, transportation, community public facilities, economic development. I hear someone falling asleep. Historic preservation and downtown, and the downtown area. So, there's one area that kind of was specifically downtown. These are the different actions that they came up with.
Actually, will you go back to the very first?
Nope.
I don't know.
Thank you. Which one? This one? This one?
Yeah.
This one?
No, one more. Um, so, I just want everybody just to pay attention to, uh...
Sorry.
And you go through these separate...
Oh, I was wiping off my screen, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think that, that they've got some really good things called out here that we should be reviewing these. These haven't been reviewed in a long time, so, I definitely think that they're worth going back and looking at them, but, um, I just wanted to point that out, make sure that you are paying attention to that.
Yeah. The RFA plan.
Well, the RFA plan, the subdivision ordinance, uh, there's, there's a lot of items in here that haven't been addressed for a long time.
Ten years ago.
It's time for us to, to deal with these things, so, uh, this is part of our planning efforts that we should be working on going forward. And setting up the, uh, the expectation for future councils, we should remember what they determined years ago, and it's a good idea that we can go through this. Well, and to the extent that there was community involvement, and there was, you know, they, they had public meetings, they had public input.
I was on the task force.
Right. I mean, I, I really, I'm sincere about this. I, I don't wanna throw away those efforts. I don't think you redesign every five years and start from scratch. You should build on what came before, and that's just my advice. I mean, that, obviously, you all, you're free to do as you act. You're, you're elected to represent, and if you feel like that isn't representative, then, then by all means. But, um, that said, you, there's seen, the, the common thread with all those plans is a lot of planning and no action, right? And that is not a, it, it really is not an indictment, that's not the way it's intended at all. I think that, uh, there were probably some very significant, uh, funding issues and shortfalls. The fact of the matter is that we built up a very strong fund balance in that, in these intervening years that did not...
I remember two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, there were significant fund issues, funding issues.
Yeah, and I can, I can see that. I mean, we've built up a fund balance, but really, when you look at how much we've contributed, the millions of dollars, it's really been fairly recent. Remember that chart where I showed you the growth of the fund? It, it's really been only within the last six years or so, six to eight years, that we've really added to, to the growth and improved the city's financial, um, foundation, if you will. So, I, I can understand, and again, there wasn't, um, I, I, I think the commitment this council's made to the tax rate, not just this year, but future years, is what will be the basis for, for investing in these types of plans. So, um, I, again, I, I think the issue is now we need to act, right?
It's better to spend money on implementing stuff than on planning to implement stuff.
Right. And, so, again, in keeping with that, you know, my initial thought was, we need to do a downtown master plan. Well, maybe, maybe not. I, I think maybe if we had enough consensus around what's been done. The only fear I'd have as the administrator is that although this other planning efforts have taken place, nothing has been done, really, on a comprehensive, uh, scale just for downtown. Even though there's a couple of things that talk about downtown revitalization, nothing's really looked at on the scale that I'm familiar with, that I've worked in the past, where they actually looked at and predicted and put forecasts and kind of a business plan, if you will, altogether for the downtown, including methodologies like a TERS, whether that's appropriate, or different other, other funding mechanisms, and made specific recommendations to the council. And then that acted as a policy document. So, the, the, even though I have some of these prior efforts, I really don't have a policy document to act from. Um, I have a, some standalone ideas, which I'll show you in a second, on September Square, on Houston Square, and on the streetscaping. And we could do those, um, but they would not be holistic in nature, and maybe that's okay. Again, I'm...
But I think that it's prudent that we do this because, I mean, if you look at just the, the difference between ten years ago and today, it's just the scale at which people are coming here. And you don't, you don't understand that scale until, until you experience that scale. And, um, if we don't do this, then people will come in, they'll buy buildings, they'll make their own changes, regardless of what the master plan looks like. So, if we're going to shape what it's gonna look like, I think, like, specifically about parking, the lack of parking, we don't want people coming in and just opening up businesses, creating parking issues, parking all over people's streets. So, if we don't do that, I think that we would be negligent in our duties to the people that we represent.
Uh, yes. And I, and I think that, um, part of this issue, i- there's two separate issues. The, the other issue is the CZO, and I think one of the conversations we've had is the development of a UDO, a Unified Development Ordinance. Uh, we will be presenting to council about that in the new year, what that consists of, what that process looks like, and, um, encouraging and, and requesting that we, we embark on that with our P&amp;Z. It will be, require a commitment of resources, but a Unified Development Ordinance basically attempts to put design regulations along with zoning, and along with code enforcement, and kind of puts all in one place. And typically, they're, they're developed in a fashion that is much easier to both interpret for, for the layman, so that the developer's coming in and wanting, looking to develop, and for staff trying to enforce it, right? And one of the things that it would also do is, is, I think in that process, we would establish, uh, for instance, one of these plans, I think it's in the two thousand and sixteen that I'm about to review, um, one of the things that they did, which I, which, next thing I say is, if you're gonna only review one plan, if you only wanna look at one document, look at the two thousand and sixteen. Because that document reviewed all the other documents. And it's not a plan in and of itself. It's actually a review of prior planning, and then based on that, it, it summarizes and makes some recommendations. So, the two thousand and sixteen, this vision plan for Casperville, that's what they did. They looked at these Casper Parks and Rec Plan, the City of Casper Tenure Facilities Report, they looked at these planning efforts. Now, I will say, this Casperville, um, Downtown Vision Plan two thousand and thirteen, I do not have of that. And I didn't see it on the website, and so, um, and I haven't asked Deborah or anybody else for it. I just, I, I didn't see it, and I didn't notice that it was referenced until I was going through this report and preparing the, uh, the summary slides. So, that's a report that I'm missing that I need to find where that is. 'Cause that would be, I mean, it's a downtown plan in two thousand and thirteen, so that may actually have even more information, better information than some of the other stuff that I found. But it doesn't seem to be that case, just because of the, the conclusions that this plan drew, but, but I'd still like to see it in its original form. Um, they had five key conclusions, um, that were gonna develop, uh, significant growth, duh. Uh, that should be thought, thoughtfully managed. There should be a clear delineation between Old Town and New Town. The village feel of Old Town should be maintained. Every effort should be made to maintain the levers, the heritage, the community. So, um, and then they established some, some action plans, and unfortunately, like I said, there was, these weren't necessarily followed. This was in two thousand and sixteen. So, again, I wanted to make these, uh, available to you, and hopefully, maybe in a little bit more useful format, because there, it's not, you're not dealing with a tedious document. You can just kind of glance at these and see what their major, their high-level recommendations are, and then you can go back and refer to those, those plans to see, uh, see them for yourself. Um, and then, like I said, this is the one that was referenced that I haven't been able to find yet. I'd like to just show you some of those pictures from the various planning efforts to give to you and others an idea. This is the, uh, oh, gosh.
Your presentation is done.
Oh. We lost you.
That's all right. We'll fix it, we'll fix that. Maybe.
Voila.
There we go. All right. So, uh, these are some of the visuals. So, this is from the two thousand and sixteen plan. Uh, what you're looking at here is the intersection of four seventy-one and Highway ninety. This is Bill Miller's, as you see, kind of their parking lot. And what they've done is put this, this, uh, big gateway, right? And then there's, you can see, ninety looks a little different than it does today. It's got, you know, these clear pedestrian sidewalks, trees and stuff. And, you know, to people who, if, if you're for this, and you think this is a good idea, um, I will tell you, it's not, from my experience in dealing with text dot, this is not outside the realm of possibility. In fact, there's quite a bit of federal funding for this, for the, these sidewalks. There's a lot of money for that right now. Uh, doesn't mean we're gonna get it right away, but it is something that we could put in front of text dot with a clear ask and say, this is something that the Casperville is prioritizing, this is something we want, and we wanna do this in this, in these areas, right? Now, the next one's a little bit more drastic. This is at Victory Lane. Um, what I think is interesting is, and I'm wondering if this isn't, um, not, I, I wonder not, I wonder if this isn't just a coincidence. I think maybe they saw this plan or something. But this is very, very similar to the monument that is being considered and developed by Alstacia Oaks. Their monument looks a lot like this. And I don't, I'm really, I'm curious to know whether that's just a pure coincidence, or if they actually saw this and said, oh, this is what they want. Because it looks a lot like this. But it's an interest in Alstacia Oaks.
What intersection?
This is Victory Lane.
Yeah, that's the high school on the left.
Okay, so this is?
Looking at Castroville.
Yeah, you're looking back towards Castroville.
Okay, on 471.
Yes. No, not on Highway 90. This is 90. This is Victory Lane.
But the high school wouldn't be that close on 90.
Yeah, this isn't a high school. I don't want this.
Yeah, that's John Deere.
John Deere.
John Deere in the bank.
Yeah, when you say high school.
The high school's not near there.
So maybe, maybe, maybe they did look at that and say, hey, this is a good idea. I, let's see, that was 49. I was going to go to 50. Yeah, this is, for the history lovers out there, they did a little. So that picture on the right, the picture on the left is Brewery House. This picture on the right is just a concept plan for development of that space. And I'm looking at Phil, because I know he has a lot to do with that. But, yeah, my point is, there's some really interesting renderings that they actually, they put some effort in to develop.
Actually, Mickey Conrad did the one on the right.
Yeah, it says LPA.
With their LPA, yeah. And, but I'm sure we gave him permission to use it.
Right. So I don't know if that's something that's in the works on it.
No, that's in the works.
And then 54 and 55, I was going to show you, I think this was a public city hall in library.
Public city halls?
Public works yard. So, and there's a couple of different public works yard presentations. You know, there's been a lot of ideas. Everybody's telling us how they want us to use our land. But there's one that, you know, the city hall and library there. There's another one that's really interesting I want to show you in a second. And that was from those kids that looked at it. And I would tell you, I see kids, okay, they're college students, but still. All relative, I guess. But there's something you said for people who are not from here, who look at this with fresh eyes and have, I think, concepts. I think sometimes, even if it's not exactly right or exactly what we want, there is some benefit to kind of stirring those creative uses in our own minds by looking at something that's really different, really outside the box. And so I'm going to show you that in a minute. But this is mixed-use development on Highway 90, new hotels and retail, you see kind of the streets, that kind of stuff. But the reason I think this is, I mean, this was done in 2016. What's happening today that wasn't happening in 2016?
That corner, that field right there is getting, becoming.
All this is actually under development agreement. Like, all this stuff is about to happen. So it is, I think it's really, really important that you all have an idea of, well, what do we want? What do we want? And what does our code say we require? And that's something, that's an exercise that we desperately need to go through with our P and Z, where we illustrate for them, if you allow someone to build just according to our code, what would they, what would they be required to build? And see what that outcome is, and then say, okay, now here's what was envisioned for this area versus what the code says. Which do we prefer, right? And I think, I think that the outcome of that kind of an exercise would be, well, yeah, we want to do something a little bit more like this. Because what our code currently requires is deficient. Now, it has performed well in the past, like with this SUP. But it's poorly written, and it's difficult to interpret. And the layman can't really figure out, well, what is their intent, and what can I do? So it needs to be a massage, but, what's that?
Sometimes, yeah, experts can't figure it out either.
Well, I was going to say this, and I can't remember, I don't know what the paper references, but early on, he says, you know, you identified in your land use plan, there's like 11 or 13 different zones. But then when you go look in your CZO, there's only four, three or four. So there's, you have all these permissions or all these zone types that are identified, but they aren't really structured or well-defined within the code itself. They're just kind of mentioned here and there. So I think, like I said, I think there's a desire. I don't think these concepts are brand new. I just don't think they've been fully fleshed out in the past. And I think we have a tremendous opportunity to do that, especially, and the time to do that was four years ago. But we definitely want to really start focusing on this. So, there was one more at the airport, and this will be important as we talk about. This is just another view that said. 67? So this is just a vision of the airport can be used. And it's, and it follows fairly well our, I didn't bring my mouse. I'm struggling. But when we talked, remember, about light industrial and where it could go, whether or not it was even appropriate in the city of Castroville? You know, there has been some discussion about this in the past. And there is some documentation that we have identified land for that purpose. And, you know, just to give you an idea, for instance, this, that property largely is in private hands right now. It is in private hands of, for development. The city doesn't have the coffers to do this now. They could, through zoning and other measures, try to make this the reality, right? So as things come forward, they, we would put incentives and other things in place that would incentivize this kind of an outcome, this light industrial. That's one way to accomplish that. The other way to accomplish that would be to buy the land and create an industrial park. And that's the better way to do it, if you have the money, if you can figure out how to do that. Because you then are the seller of the land, and you can dictate all kinds of stuff, right? And really determine who comes in, and, you know, that they, exactly what they want, well, they might get the land for free. Because you can see the value that they're going to put back in in terms of tax dollars, capital investment, jobs, et cetera. And that's why a lot of cities with an EDC that has a sales tax funded and a strong revenue, they'll go out and they will land bank to make their land plan happen. One of the challenges that we have is the ETJ versus in-city limits. Now, I believe all of this is in our city limits, so we're okay there. Is it not right here on this side?
The purple is in the ETJ.
Okay. So, so that's going to be a challenge. Because in our ETJ, as far as enforcing zoning and that kind of thing, it's more of a challenge in ETJ than it is within the city limits. I was also going to show you this, and then I'll stop. This is river access. This is one of the things that we've talked a lot about, you know, should we have a river access or not? Should we close them off entirely, or should we encourage them to reuse them? Are there places within the city, looking at Paul's report, where it would be appropriate to actually encourage river access, and other places where, you know, we want to just, you know, we'll figure out something else to do there, because we don't want to encourage it. Where we do want to encourage it, I thought these, again, these students had some really interesting ideas. And I'm a picture guy, so I love how they illustrated everything. So they kind of see how they did this step approach, and they really, they put a lot of effort and thought into this. And that's because I think, I think they had such a large team, you know, this was a whole team. Like, this was, this part of the, just this small piece of the plan was, you know, someone's final project, if you will, for the year, for their masters. Going to 341, 342. Someone looking at here, this is, oh, the small house concept. That'll be right here. So this was interesting. This is the public works yard. And this was what this plan came up with for the public works yard. And these are all houses. And this is like a little area. And what they did, I mean, again, just think it's, it's kind of cute. It's, they went to, they said, okay, what is, these people say they're Alstacia, and they want to have this European tie. What does the community in Europe look like, and what kind of setup would they have? And that's, this is what they came back with. Well, they would have this, you know, they have kind of a little town square kind of concept, and these small, very small footprint homes for single, single people or elderly or whatever. And that was the concept. So, again, I'm not sure, I don't know if this is appropriate or something y'all want to pursue, but it's definitely interesting. So I will send you a list, so as not to prolong this conversation, of all the different pages with the different photos that you can skip toward to those locations within this document. There's, like I said, there's one on the north, oh, let me do this one. See how far, yeah. I love this one, because look at that. This is from 2002, folks.
That's crazy.
And what is that red line? That's a northern route.
Yeah.
But I thought we had that idea. Turns out that someone else had it before we had it, so.
There's another map, too, that shows the southern route.
Yes, and I've seen that one as well.
Castro has in his journal, he was talking about that northern route.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a concept that's been around for a very long time, discussed by many generations of people.
We don't have to have unique ideas, just good ones.
Right. Well, and the reason I'm sure this is that
Executable ideas.
These things were talked about in a public format by, you know, they went through a process of some sort. So there's got to be some community institutional knowledge of some of these planning efforts. And, you know, sometimes it can be daunting or overwhelming as council elected officials to feel like you're the ones, you know, holding that road or row, and you're carrying that load. And really, truthfully, if you're building on the work and the efforts of folks in the past, you aren't doing it wrong. You're doing it with all those. So I'll send you, like I said, these other references, and you can take a look at those. I would strongly encourage that. What I would like. What's that?
Three river accesses.
Yeah. What I would like, that's what those blue boxes are, right?
All right, yeah.
Yeah. So what I would like is y'all's, kind of just, you're in it, back to that visioning exercise we did in the retreats, really take a look at some of these documents, or at least the summary, or at least the 2016. And give me some of your thoughts, and tell me how off the mark they were, or is there anything there you really, really liked? Because, you know, that's something I think we should get behind and do. Because, one, I think we're in a unique position to make some of the things happen. And, two, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think we need to look at prior planning efforts and see what has merit still and what doesn't. All right. That is the conclusion of my presentation of this. I don't have, there's many specific action other than I will, I'm going to look at that 2013 plan, and I do want to put something together specific to the downtown, where I'll just talk about downtown recommendations, and then talk about whether or not there's a need to do a new comprehensive downtown plan. How long was that? When did you start?
Six weeks.
This is, yes, discussion.
Yes, we're done. That's what I'm saying. I'm wrapping up. There's no action. Just wanted to.
You want some discussion, huh?
I want to talk.
I'd just like to say, this is a hell of a lot of work by a lot of people. I was on some of those efforts. And what's, what broke is you don't get the link from all these efforts to the capital improvements plan. That's what's broke. And in order for us to fix that link, what I would like to see is I would like to see an effort by the city staff to take the map and fill in what we know. Not what's in all these plans, what we know is going on right now, so we can say, this is today. And then we sit down in a workshop, and we look at those ideas that you've been summarizing, and we pick out the ones that we want to act on, and we figure out if they're doable. And if they are, we prioritize them, and we put them in the capital improvement plan somewhere and give them a name. And then we work toward, over time, figuring out how we pay for them, and when we do them, and fill in the detail. Because this cycle has been repeated about six times in the 23 years I've been living here, and it never goes anywhere. It goes to the shelf in your office.
That's why it takes away as well.
So I'd like to see, let's take the good ideas, and let's build a bridge to the capital improvement plan, and let's start with today, because today negates about half that stuff.
Okay, thank you, Herb. But, and you're being my champion right now, except that you said that I want staff to come and say, what's happening today? And you, or I think you're as informed as whereas I am about the developments occurring and what we're doing. What I need, you all, I need you all, the council, to tell me, what is, what are the good ideas? I don't know. I cannot, I can't, I can tell you what I think is a good idea, that's not how that should happen. I'm not from here, I'm just the administrator. I need you all to tell me, what are the good ideas that you really think are the highest priority that we should go do? Because I'm telling you, there's a lot of actionable stuff in there. We can't do all of it. We can do some of it and nail it out of the frickin' park. We can do some, we can do other parts of it and just kind of start the process, like the Highway 90. We're not going to nail that out of the park, guys. We're going to, we're going to start that effort. And text dot will dictate how long that takes, right? But what we, but it won't happen, as to your point, Herb, if we never have the conversation. And if staff isn't directed that this isn't just an idea anymore. This is something we, as this council want to pursue, and we want the mayor and the city to take that as an item to this transportation task force, and, so that's the kind of direction I really need from the collective. Not, because the mayor and I have lots of conversations, but as I remind the mayor, he doesn't have a vote on council. I need the council's input, and we need to make sure that as a group, we have identified what are the key priorities from all these prior planning efforts, and which ones we want to hone in on. And I don't think it takes a year to do that. I think we can do that a couple of meetings.
Well, I think that we maybe, I think the process is we go through and do it in a workshop. We take some time and actually dive into this. I think that you did a great summary on here, comparing the different things. But I think that we really owe it to ourselves to do a deep dive into these documents. We need to find that 2013 if we can, and look at them, come up with the ideas, and give them direction on, I think that this is like a full-on workshop that we go through this, and come up with the priorities, come up with what we still feel is in line with the people that we represent, what their wants are, what their desires are. So I think that that's something, can we do that? Can we do that in January?
A workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, potentially.
I think it gives us, I think we look at it toward the end of January. It gives us a month to take a look at this stuff. It's going to take some time to digest this, and I really want.
I need to have, I'll tell you, I have to have a February workshop with you all on power. We're going to go through a different power process, and we'll go, because of the winter events or anything else, it's, it's good enough information that we don't want to try to do it in a council meeting. We want to maybe have a separate workshop just to talk about our power contracts with Schneider Engineering.
Okay. We'll talk about that on the last ETJ, right?
Yeah. I'm just letting you know, because you're talking about having one in January, that there's also going to be one in February at some point.
How long is that one?
Couple hours, a little bar, a few lines.
All right, any other discussion on this? All right, next item is staff reports. At, sorry, 7:25?
I'll make this quick. If you have any questions regarding the reports, I'd be happy to.
Good night.
Good night.
I just want to give, under the Parks Board meeting updates, regarding the COVID memorial. There's two young individuals that have a concept for doing this huge elaborate COVID memorial. One young man says it's his Eagle Scout project, but he has no details. His coworker, who's saying it's a 4H project for her, no details. I know whenever any other Eagle Scout did their projects, before they even kicked it off and everything, they had to have it approved by the Eagle Board before it is even brought to the board, the Parks Board or City Council for approval. They have none of that. One of the locations that has been brought up, and it has been met with fierce opposition, and I understand why, and I agree with it, is they are looking at September Square. September Square is for fallen soldiers, sailors, marines that lost their lives during wartime. This is COVID. It is not seen as the same.
Can I push back on that just a little bit, because I don't know the history? On September Square, is there any document, any writ, any council action, any city action, at any time that declares September Square expressly for veterans? If there is, I just don't know.
There is. Nick Ortiz has the documents. The American Legion has the documents. There is. It was dedicated for the founders of the city and for those that lost their lives during wartime. That is why there was such huge pushback. Our recommendation is Houston Square. That is the focal point of the city, Houston Square, and do a memorial for COVID there.
And I would say Regional Park, because Houston Square, we're probably going to redo at some point.
Regional Park has pushed back on that one, too. So.
Well, they brought this to the Parks Board.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
So we won't, so, again, you're just providing input because you were on the, you were there and hearing stuff or whatever.
Well, well, no, but I'm just letting you know, the two individuals did not appear at the last Parks Board meeting like they were supposed to with their presentation. So until they get their detailed plan done, they have been told that we can't record, forward it up to any further.
I'll assure you, they will not be before council until they're ready.
Yeah, but I'm just.
And right now, we think that'll be in January sometime, but who knows?
That's if they get their Eagle Board approved and everything like that. But otherwise, the master plan, us board members are going through and making our comments, or putting our questions in. And then Patrick will be consolidating it all and finalizing any changes before it's brought to us on the 11th of January. And just FYI, for my part, there will not be a Parks Board meeting this month. It was canceled. That's my only input on that part.
I got a question about the airport. Says here, Scott and I have met with Don Jackson Construction and completed a pre-construction meeting?
Yes, that's for the USDA.
Is that, John Jackson Construction is going to be the contractor?
Don Jackson is who this council awarded to construct the new hangar at the airport, yes.
Yep.
Boy, I forget for a sec.
Now, you may have got that meeting. You missed one meeting because you were.
That's right. I think you were absent. You're getting old, but it's not, that's not the reason.
And I guess where I'm going with that is, I hope we're getting our best app, bang for the buck.
I don't know anybody's getting their best bang for the buck these days with inflation. But that Don Jackson is, they're a very reputable builder. They've done a lot of these projects. They've worked with KSA specifically. They've been vetted. I have no concerns about their ability. I do think the project cost is ludicrous, but it is what it is. I mean, they were the cheapest, which is scary, you know?
Herb, that was that same meeting that you promised, give me $10,000 as a gift.
Pardon me?
Man, you're so nice. Not Herb, Todd.
They need an extra 10K?
From you to him.
No, you're going to give it to me.
Yeah. You don't remember that. You don't remember that either, though, strangely. Oddly, you don't remember that. We'll have to go back and look in the minutes.
I have some questions for you, if you don't, if Todd.
If Todd's down.
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Number one, code enforcement, it tells us there are so many files open, so many quotes. Can we get a list? Because I'm constantly being asked by people, what's being done on this? And I don't know if it's even on the list or not. But we used to get a list, my street address, what the issue was, what the status was. It's real simple list.
Yeah, if you used to do it that way, then.
Yeah, and it really benefits you. I think all the city departments ought to get the library to do their presentations. They do absolutely. But they also, it's very involved. I give kudos to the library. Not just because of the presentations, but they're very active, just like the park is. Movies at the Park. You all have a brochure here called Movies at the Park, and it says that News of the World is going to be shown at City Hall on the January 7th at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
It's, and then, but however, the Chamber of Commerce has the exact same brochure, but it shows that News of the World is going to be in February. So there's two brochures out there with different dates on them. Somebody to check on.
So, well, I know that there was, I know that there was a change, and I don't know which one of those.
Well, right now, today, or last, this week, last week, and for several weeks, the Chamber of Commerce is, which I give kudos to the Chamber of Commerce, but those two are being shown different than what's in your report. So I guess we need to make sure.
So the COC, the COC flyer shows it, what?
On February 11th. It's basically that February 11th, and it's going to be at Regional Park, but it shows that Jungle Cruise is going to be at City Hall on January 7th. shows that Jungle Cruise is going to be at City Hall on January 7th. So the Chamber of Commerce brochure, exact same brochure, just those two different venues are changed, dates and venues. Arnie's going to, no.
I'll talk to Devin about it.
Yeah, it was a very heroic Friday night, a couple weeks, I don't remember the date, but the Castorville film would be shown on the wall out here for City Hall, and that was it. And then about two days later, it came out with a flyer that's all over town showing it at a totally different date, and nothing about down here.
Yeah, so I need to find which of that's correct.
Yeah.
We'll get that fixed.
Might have to have good lawyers.
Yeah, well, because Jungle Cruise, I've seen, so has the other one, News of the World, but I've come outside, and, but anyway, we need to make sure that people get that on their calendars now.
You've seen Jungle Cruise?
Yeah.
Wow, you're up to date.
Well, it's on Disney Plus, so I got grandkids.
Got grandkids, that's a key word there.
Yeah. The restoration of the cemetery, I've gone up and looked at that, the cemetery at Regional Park, if you guys haven't seen that, just, you notice it right from the bottom at the parking lot, but it looks a lot different. It's really cleaning up good, far bigger project than I anticipated, but they're doing a great job.
They're done.
They're done. They finished up, must have been last day or two they finished. Yeah.
I hope, I hope you think it looks finished, because they, as far as I've been informed, it's completed. That may have been today, I can't remember.
Yeah.
The days bleed together.
But, yeah, because the cracks are all gone, it's, they did a really nice job.
Shouldn't last the next 100 years.
Should be, 150. Christmas decoration around town, I mean, people, I've commented, other people commented, they did a really great job. The things that, the, you know, the park, everything.
Well, kudos to Mikey and his group, the Parks group. He does this on his own, he goes and, he does it at his house and some friends' houses, he'll make these PVC trees. We looked at purchasing for the city, and they were like $800 or $900 apiece, and we made them for 150. So, yeah, yes.
Did great. Well, Mikey and his crew, you guys did good. One other question, revenue for the park, this is on page 127 of the agenda. It shows online transactions for October, there were 156, and for November, there's 238, but there's only $1,000 more in revenue. I guess that's because those online transactions could go out for the summer reservations or...
Yeah, yes, so the revenue reported is, so, yes.
So the revenue is current.
Yes.
Whereas the just online, someone.
And we are booked. That's one of the things that did happen within the last little while is that we're booked solid, like for the rest of the year, for however many months, the RV is full, RV parks. We do have a new host there, I don't know if that was your council.
You did get a new host?
Yeah, this is a host that we found, I'm trying to remember how you said you found it.
Okay. Well, yeah.
We have a written agreement with them?
I don't know if we have a written agreement or not.
I don't have one.
Learn from our lessons.
No cash transactions.
Yeah.
And that's it. Those are the only questions I had or statements. Looks good. And by the way, Blue, I've run into him several times. See, my mind, Blue's doing a great job with the dogs, cats, and everything else. He seems sincere. He's up feeding deer blinds one day. Of course, you could have been out there hunting that night, no, I'm just joking. Because, no, they do, and then the night, the day, we were walking our dogs, and they had gotten their call that somebody was after the geese at the park, and he was parked up there just keeping an eye on them. So he, he watches over all of our little official and unofficial animals.
Creatures. He does. He cares. He does big art.
Nothing to add other than to also reiterate, kudos to Blue. He was available to us. I have a neighbor that has a couple rottweilers that got out, and apparently had some woman in her stroller frozen in the middle of the road. And my daughter arrived and blocked the dogs with her car, and we called Blue, and he came out immediately and dealt with the situation, and I believe they got a citation. So, but he's there, and he's available, and it's been great, and he's not afraid to walk up to the door and beat on it when there's a couple rottweilers hanging out.
Good.
I got to hand it to him.
This would pass the humps. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez?
Blue's out there. I don't, oh.
Yeah, you heard her.
Chief said that Blue was up, they were getting the improvements done to the shelter, done, and so that's all being wrapped up, which is perfect timing since it's supposed to be cold and wet this weekend. But now he's constantly out there, and he has a recommendation for us to recommend for city to look at, updating the ordinance regarding nuisance animals, that kind of stuff, because like Mr. Reese said, roosters are being a pain in the neck, Blue's cats, yada yada. So, but Blue would like to see that as well. So it's just something for us to help him out.
I own no cats, but there's a half dozen of them hiding in my house.
But now he's doing a phenomenal job, just like everybody else in the city, working their butts off to serve us.
I got one other question for Scott. What are we doing on Berlin? Just a, just a street project?
Yep.
We about, we getting anywhere there?
Yeah.
I thought we'd do street projects in the summertime.
That'd be great. Yeah, ideal. Remember, we'd originally, this project started out, I'm glad you brought up, it started out as repairs to Country Village and River Bluff, and then we moved off of those, and before we, completely in a different direction, mostly due to the availability of funds and trying to make sure that we're picking a street that is least likely to have a water or sewer or other concern below grade. And that is a big challenge for the city. So as we're looking at developing a city, a street improvement plan going forward, that's going to be one of the big issues, is maybe like sort of Lafayette project, that water project, we will time that to also do a street project there.
Right.
Once that water pump is complete. We don't want to fix a road and then tear it up, that's the last thing.
Well, I just, winter time ain't the appropriate time to be doing anything.
It's less than ideal, agreed. But it'll be fine. I mean, what they're doing, it'll be great. We've had some.
Besides, it's Texas.
It looks muddy.
And it was 90 degrees last week.
It don't even look like road base, though. It looks like mud. It looks like dirt.
It's a cement stabilized material that, that you can, it can go a hundred year storm, and it's not going, that go jump out, and that is a hard base material.
Really?
It's really a very inexpensive, great.
We had people trying to drive through Portland when they're putting it in, and he's like, you do not want this on your car, folks. Come through.
It won't come off with the car wash, huh?
Well, it can cause some issues. It's got a line and there's something, right?
Oh, man.
But that, but it sets up within three hours, so that's, but they are going to chip seal it, right? There was some rumor that they were going to asphalt it, and I had not heard that change. Get rumors all over the place.
Yeah, remember. Not asphalt again. Now, that may be because, the reason we didn't do River Bluff and Country Village is because those do require asphalt, and that may be where that's getting, someone's getting the rocks crossed.
Put them up till when it warms up. Two courses of.
You have, there was an improvement near Country Village, that was also in your report, that was redone, it kind of do those things that.
What's that?
Came to white.
The flooding over near Roxanne's house, that always happened.
Yeah.
The flooding?
Yeah, the ponding of water over near her driveway and everything.
They fixed all that.
They're in there with the.
That's a pipe drain.
The loader's getting the crud out of the drain. They put them coverts in there, you're going to see some baggage props and backup properly, because it was just a slab, went through the ditch, now you got covered, so they're going to get clogged up. And I wish to heck they'd finish that damn thing. I'm tired of them making winters running over my curb at Village Path and Sunnyland.
Well, one of the issues we have is getting the drainage out to bed, and so that should be happening shortly. We've got to get that out to bed and then awarded, and unfortunately, like I said, that ended up, what I thought was naively, you know, $20,000, $30,000, we got people here, they need the dirt, how hard is this? Turned into $100,000 plus.
They had a malfunction with the covert, they had it paved and everything, and they ripped it all back out, and they're sorting over, I mean, not the covers, but everything on top.
Right.
It looks like they're putting steel in it again today, so I don't know.
Did they forget?
Sir?
Did they forget the steel?
No, I saw steel in it, but I don't, I don't understand, I didn't go walk up to it close, I'm looking at it from a distance.
I didn't realize they were completely redoing it again.
Well, it was, it was blacktopped, it was asphalted over, it was ready to rock and roll, and somebody didn't like it.
That's, that's a technical issue, it's called a, uh-oh.
That was the ID 10T?
Well, that's.
So, one of the things that was going to be on the agenda for tonight, we just, accidental omission was our overall streets plan, so I think we should discuss that in January, if we've got room on that. I'd like to put it on the first one, just to get people aware of how we're approaching things, what we're doing, what we're not doing, clear up some of the confusion, let folks know what's going on, that we are fixing them, but getting them the idea of what to look out for.
I'm ready for a club drink.
Anything else on that? Great. Any, last item is future agenda items?
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I heard streets plan, we've got the SGP.
Yep, I was kind of transitioning.
Y'all motioned to bring back the National League of Cities Water Line Programs, all of us getting that back. May or may not be the immediate next meeting, whatever it's ready for.
Something else, in the, we, you know, we all know which are the really bad, abused speed streets in the city, and they're usually ones with long stretches with few stop signs.
Don't be looking at Village Path.
And, but one, and most of them, it's citizens, and, but one of the streets that has a lot of non-citizens using it and speed down the street is Constantinople, because they're cutting around the, it's a shortcut around the street. And one of the problems, I think it was, we could slow it down if we put more stop signs on Constantinople, because we don't use that street coming up, but, I mean, I've been a lot, I've spent a lot of time on Constantinople. It's, most of the traffic is speeding, and they're going 50 miles an hour down at 25 mile an hour speed.
Why don't we just do enforcement?
And most of them are not local, and they're just, so like, for instance, if we put a stop sign at, and the reason I'm bringing this up as agenda is talk, whatever we need to discuss this, but the, as you come up the hill off the, off the water crossing there, you're at Gentile. And then there's another one, not at Lisbon, but two, the street north of Lisbon, Florence. But it's just amazing.
You get enough stop signs on the street. Listen, why don't we get the cops over there?
Well, if any, get a cop, or I know, if we can get traffic.
We have a traffic calming policy, and you request a traffic study.